All right, good morning, everyone. We are waiting for a couple of council members, I think, or no, maybe one online?
None, yep.
We have one online. Oh, I'm hearing some feedback. It's echoing. Do you hear it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe it's a laptop.
It was a cellphone.
Cellphone?
Door.
Okay.
All right, good morning, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Hi, good morning.
I don't know if you saw me online as well. This is Councilmember Ewer.
Yes, okay, good. Perfect. And then I would just remind you, if you need to speak, let the clerk know, because sometimes I forget when you're not in your chair, so just wave us down. All right, good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good morning.
That's it? That doesn't sound like a good morning. How are you this morning?
Good.
There you go. There you go, so much better. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to kick off the meeting for Wednesday, November 12, 2025, and we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would love for Mr. Rick Murdock to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, one nation, under God.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I am going to send it to you to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, calling roll for Wednesday, November 12, 2025. Vice Mayor Taylor, Dour, Martinez, Ebert.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Okay, thank you so much. Madam Clerk, we have a few special proclamations this morning. I would like to start those off first in public comment.
Great.
Okay, so with that being said, I believe we have one for the Eddie House, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to send it over to Councilwoman Taylor. Do you want to... Oh, where is it? Oh, I thought you had it, sorry. I've got it. But you're on the board, so I'd love for you to read the proclamation. All right, all of you in the audience with the Eddie House, come on up. Good morning.
Where is Utility Services? They must have it. Who has Dennis' name?
Devin's got that.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
I feel the same way. Trust me, I can't decide. It depends on how bad my eyes are that day. Go ahead.
Office of the Mayor, City of Reno, Nevada proclamation. Whereas youth homelessness is a growing concern in Reno and across the nation with thousands of young people each year facing housing instability and many risks associated with it. Whereas homeless youth are among the most vulnerable members of our community, often experiencing barriers to education, employment, and health care that hinder their ability to thrive. Whereas local organizations, including Eddie House, provide critical support such as safe shelter, food, case management counseling, workforce development, and life skills training to young people transitioning from homelessness to independence. And whereas rising awareness about youth homelessness encourages greater understanding, compassion, and action from the community to ensure every young person has access to stability, safety, and opportunity. Whereas the city of Reno is committed to working with community partners to prevent and end youth homelessness, recognizing that these efforts strengthen the health, safety, and future of our city. Now therefore...
You say that. Oh, you just say your name.
Oh, I, Lisa Schaefer, do hereby declare November 2025 National Homeless Youth Awareness Month.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yes, we would love... Well, I just, of course, we just want to extend our gratitude on behalf of everyone at Eddie House. We're so happy to be partnering with the city always. I know you all were here for our ribbon cutting not long ago, and we've come so far, and we're all just so very proud of it.
It is a beautiful project. It's extremely rare across the country to see something like this, and the fact that you guys made it happen, I know you had a lot of stakeholders, but so many people in the community doing all the work with our youth that are suffering from homelessness. It is remarkable. If any of you guys get the opportunity to go, go and see it. It's a beautiful mini-campus.
It's gorgeous, and I'm happy to report too that we are one-third full of our 36 transitional studio apartments.
That's fantastic.
So that's really great as well. Yeah, we've made some great progress.
Well, tell Lynette, she's amazing.
Well, she's heading to Las Vegas for a big thing down there, and we are part of that as well. So again, the continued partnership, we're so happy for that.
Yeah, congratulations. You guys deserve it.
And we'd love a photo, yeah.
Yeah, sure, let's do it.
Oops, sorry. Did we take that? Yeah. Thank you.
You all seem like you're willing to avoid me by trying to give you a big question.
And I have a couple of phones, so this one's going to take a minute. One, two, three, and then one more. Okay? One, two, three.
Can we do one more? Because we have...
Oh, yeah. You got called out. One time again, ready? Okay, one, two, three, and then one more. One, two, three. Thank you. All right. Amazing work.
Okay. Ready? Round two. We have a special proclamation for a Dennis Green who has done outstanding work in our community, and this is going to be a series of keys to the city. And so if any of you have community members, or family, or friends that would like to be honored by the city, we would love to hear from you. So our first official key to the city... Well, it's not our first official. Matter of fact, you guys should know, I'm a lover of music, and our first key to the city was actually to the rock band Kiss. How many of you are fans of Kiss? Oh, come on, raise your hand. They're all going like this. So actually, that was our first key to the city because of their work for mental health and veterans. They do a lot of work across the country. They came to Reno, they performed, and they rolled out their huge initiative on mental health. And so we thought it was very commendable and gave them the first official key to the city. So now this is part of our series of outstanding community members, and I'm going to let Councilwoman Reese take it away.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much, and this one is a special one because it's someone I have really gotten to know over the last five or six years. But I'm going to ask Dennis Green and his family and troupe of friends who are going to be with us up here today to come on down. Dennis, where are you hiding?
Dennis, come on up. He's blushing. Look at the cheerleaders you brought with you.
Well, I'm going to tell you all about that, and of course, I'm excited today to represent the city and you, Madam Mayor, who has so graciously today given Dennis this honor. You can see that there's a lot of people who love and care for Dennis behind me, including a bunch of folks from the university, Spirit Squad, and the Cheer Program. So it's a really incredible honor. In June, we did present Dennis with a proclamation. It was part of a special evening that, Madam Mayor, you participated in, but I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we're going to let Dennis say a few words before we take some pictures. It says, "Whereas Dennis Green has dedicated over a decade of civic leadership, community service, and advocacy across northern Nevada, including more than 3,000 volunteer service hours and raising over 35,000 for local nonprofits. And whereas Dennis has been a visible leader within the LGBTQ+ community through his work with the Silver Dollar Court, International Court Council, and his service on the Board of Our Center, enhancing support and resources for marginalized communities. And whereas Dennis has championed youth mentorship through the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of northern Nevada, and served nearly a decade with the Nevada Cheer and Spirit Program, guiding and uplifting local student athletes. And whereas his outstanding dedication to service has earned him national and local recognition, including a congressional commendation, the Bayard Ruston Civil Rights Honor, and the inclusion in Northern Nevada's 20 Under 40. Now therefore, I, Devin Reese, on behalf of Mayor Hillary Shevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, have declared June 7, 2025, Dennis Green Day in and for the City of Reno, Nevada, and I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing his remarkable contributions to inclusion, youth empowerment, and civic pride in the biggest little city."
Ah, congratulations, Dennis. Speech, 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 speech.
Oh, first time doing this, so apologies for any anxiety. I have to be so honest with you, the first time I ever saw anyone get the key to the city, I was watching Spider-Man 2 with my best friends. And so when Mayor Shevy asked me to show up here today, I thought super hard about, should I wear a super suit to today's possessions? And so thankfully, I had the best group and the best team of stylists to make sure that I showed here, right, and on time. And so all jokes aside, standing here today is one of the greatest honors in my lifetime. I fell in love with the city as a student at the University of Nevada, many, many years ago, cheering on the Nevada Wolf Pack, and learning what it really means to have pride in your community. And I'm so proud to say that that same energy and spirit has stayed with me today and ever since. What started as volunteering here and there has really turned into a lifelong commitment to service and inclusion and helping people find their place. And so I've had the honor and great responsibility to impact our community for the better through my work through Nevada Cheer, the Silver Dollar Court, Our Center, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northern Nevada, and I have seen how powerful it is when people simply show up for one another. With that, I'm also proud to carry that same energy and spirit and sense of community into my career, where I get to help build a workplace rooted in people, purpose, and progress. And I just have to say, this key to the city really does not belong to me. As you guys can see, I have quite the cast of supporters in this room today. But with that, it belongs to everyone who has made Reno a place where kindness, unity, and opportunity continue to thrive. And so with that, I just want to make sure I say thank you to Mayor Shevy and the City Council for this amazing honor. With that, the organizations that helped shape me, because I would not be here today without each and every one of you guiding me to be the leader that I am here today. With that, my colleagues at Figure, because I am crazy, and everyone who has walked beside me in this journey. And so I am so proud to have served the city over the last decade, super suit or not. And so thank you guys for everything.
Well, Dennis, it is an honor. Thank you so much, and I've had the pleasure of working with you, and this is very special, especially when you have a team of cheerleaders behind you all the way. But I've seen your work firsthand, and I don't know anyone that lists up people in the way that you do. You have this sort of charisma. I could actually see future senator in your life. So I just want to say thank you for all you do, because there are a lot of people that go unseen, and you make sure that they are seen. And I noticed that, and I've been fortunate to also work with you in all the circles. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, come on up, let's...
You've everybody squeeze in, so... Yep. I know. You're contemplating something else. I was contemplating... Please, 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 please. We love each other, there you go. Okay, we've got a lot of phones, so you're all going to have to hold. Okay. So I know these are also Dennis' friends. Smile. We all have you. Yeah, okay, hold each one, and then we'll go. Two... Wait, 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 we have someone coming in, hold on. Okay, we're ready? One, two, three. Okay, you guys jump in, I'm going to grab other phones. Um, this one is the next one, or that one's the next one. I think that one's mine. Yep, neither of those are mine, okay. Okay, ready? If you can't see me, I can't see you. Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Yay! You guys, it's so good to see you. I was like, I know her! Dennis, I hope you're proud.
Thank you so much.
You too, honey.
I'm from Alaska.
You are? You did? That's so cool. Well, welcome.
Okay, Dennis, one last caveat. That key is not for speeding. We will not come... We will not come and bail you out.
Really?
Most people say, if I get the key, can I speed all day? No.
Okay, good.
All right, bye, you guys, have a great day. All right, Dennis. Dennis, one thing, come here. I think you're going to need this. He gets a key to the city, and I've got it. Or did they get... Oh, they gave you one. See, they're trying to give you two.
I'll take two.
You'll take two?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Okay, here we go.
All right, Madam Mayor, the final proclamation today is for Nevada Flood Awareness Week.
Great. This is a very important one. Who do we have here?
Trina.
Trina.
And team.
Come on up, Trina and team.
John.
John! Who's... You're going to read it?
I'll maybe do a quick introduction.
Okay, good, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers John Simpson, Utility Service, we have a number of staff here today. In the United States, floods cause over $200 billion annually. Flood Awareness Week serves as an important reminder on how preparation and teamwork protect our community. Our city plays a vital role in managing and preparing for floods here in our community. We have our maintenance and operations staff who are frontline, who are cleaning, maintaining our channels, our storm drain systems, and our other infrastructure when we need it most. We have engineering staff that maintain our infrastructure, and they also plan and prepare flood mapping for the public to really understand their risks here in the community. Together, we can help safeguard our homes, our roads, our waterways, and we encourage the public to visit the nevadafloods.org and the Truckee River Flood Management Authority website, which has fantastic information on our communities and flooding. Today, we have a few, a bunch of staff here, a few of our staff from our maintenance and operations, and our engineering team are going to read the proclamation.
Away.
Office of the Mayor, City of Reno, Nevada proclamation. Whereas the city of Reno recognizes the significant threat that flooding poses to our residents, our businesses, the community, the region, and our local economy, and...
Whereas the city of Reno has experienced flood events from the Truckee River, weather events, and flooding of local streams and channels and creeks, and...
Whereas risks can be reduced and communities can be prepared to be more aware and resilient by educating residents and businesses on actions they can take to prepare for flood events, and...
Whereas during Flood Awareness Week, local, state, and federal agencies are working together across Nevada to inform the public about the dangers of flooding and how to protect their homes, families, and businesses from a flood event and plan for recovery. Now therefore, I, Mary Horvath, on behalf of Hillary Shevy, Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby declare November 10 to the 16th, 2025 Flood Awareness Week.
Wow. You guys, I've never seen the proclamation in all my years, honestly, so I think if I was one of you, I'd be like, you want me to read? No, no, no. You guys, you get to do it. You did a wonderful job. I want everyone to know who you guys are. You guys are actually... You do predictive modeling, you're always paying attention to what's happening, weather patterns, what have you. I don't think people realize you guys are like first on the scene, you're already thinking about everything, you know, weeks, months before we even do. You guys were also the heroes. I don't know, when was that? Was that last year? I can't remember. But do you remember the pictures that the media shared, and everyone was taking the debris out and all those things from Public Works? Those are the things you guys do. So a lot of people don't get to see how hard you have to work and how you keep the city safe day in and day out. And you guys really kind of, you're sort of the unsung heroes whenever it comes to these kinds of events. And as you know, if you've... How many of you have lived in Reno your whole life? Yeah, okay. See, we remember those floods that were absolutely devastating, and so you know, I guess, how vulnerable we are. And you guys, your work is phenomenal. It really is, and so we don't thank you enough. We really don't. So we're very, very appreciative. Were you like, oh, I have to come to council? No?
The ones that had to read were worried.
I know, I would be nervous too, but you did a phenomenal job. You did a great job. So please let us know if there's anything that we can do to help you guys, and I just hope the community knows what you guys are doing behind the scenes, because they don't get to see a lot of the work that you do. And it's stressful, and it's hard, and it's very unpredictable. That's the one thing about the weather, it's so unpredictable. You don't know what you're going to be dealing with. So I just want you guys to know, we really, really appreciate you. I'm going to have Councilwoman Dour chime in. She's, I always call her the water expert, so go right ahead.
Well, I just, I want to support what you're saying and support the work that you all do. Both Councilmember Martinez and I serve on the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, and they have like three people. And there's no way that three people can manage a flooding scenario in any way, shape, form, or manner. Yes, they can help give the alert, and I know that you work in collaboration with them to determine, are we going to have a flood? You know, they have a whole flood monitoring program with the USGS stations and other stations as well, but that's just a, hey, we think it's coming. It has to be validated by you and by folks at Sparks and Wausau County, and then if there is a flood, you have to staff the EOC and manage through that flood. And even if it doesn't rise to the 100-year level, that doesn't mean it's not flooding in Reno, right? It can be flooding on streets, it can be flooding from ditch overflow. There's many reasons to flood, not just the Truckee River. So again, I want to share what the mayor said, and thank you so much for your work.
All right, congratulations. You guys all get the day off. I would take it. Yay! You can do. Hashtag Mayor May be do it.
Are we going to do a picture?
Yeah, let's do it, for sure.
Squeeze in there like you like each other. Lamar. You're trying to hide back there. Keep going, keep going. See if I can get you all... Okay, I can get you all. Ready? One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, okay, you bet.
All right, Madam Clerk, I am going to send it back to you for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item today is opening public comment. It should be noted for those in attendance that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you've said your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter is Terry Brooks, followed by Bob Piccolo, followed by Art Rangel.
Terry, good morning.
Good morning.
It was nice to see you yesterday.
It was good to see you.
Did you like it?
Yes.
It was fun. Okay, go ahead.
All right, good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again, and today I'd like to share with you my thoughts on exercise and what seniors go through. As I've been getting older, I've noticed I'm not quite as strong as I was when I was younger, so I've been trying to learn to still hop along. When I retired, it wasn't long before I realized that I would be getting quite as... that I wouldn't be getting quite as much exercise. So I learned to go for a walk, and did so every day, and I got used to bending over and picking up pennies along the way. I even walk here to City Hall to read to you my rhymes, and so far, I've walked here and back home well over 100 times. Walking is a good exercise for most people to do, and when you walk somewhere, you have... you save money on gasoline, too. Back in 2010, I was in a car wreck, and I lost my ability to walk. I went from wheelchair to walker to crutches and cane, and I gradually learned how to walk. I'd also lost my sense of balance, but I came up with some exercise to improve my sense of balance, and it helped me stabilize. I came up with 12 exercises and did several repetitions each day. It helped me keep my sense of balance, and I still do them today. I started out doing each exercise with repetitions of 10, and over a year, I'd add some more again and again and again. Doing such exercises regularly is not only healthy to do, but counting them as I do them helps my memory, too. Such exercises have been one of my starting points to help me strengthen my muscles and help to move my joints. It has helped me to walk a mile to a better lifestyle, and it has been worthwhile to help me want a smile. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back, and I'll be walking here that day.
I love it. Thank you, Terry. Great job.
Bob Piccolo, followed by Art Rangel, followed by Christina Mactudis.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
I just, I got your correspondence.
Yeah, should I put the pictures up on the... on this?
Sure, you can.
Is that good? Yeah, there we go. Okay, dear members of the City Council, I am here as a longtime homeowner at 300 Kilburn Avenue to formally express my deep concern and frustration regarding the severe negative impact that the recently completed five-story apartment complex immediately behind my property has been on both my property value and personal privacy. When the City Council approved this project, we were at the meeting and spoke against it. Prior to construction, my backyard was private, peaceful retreat. Today, I am stared down upon by dozens of residents. Residents' guests on the upper floors have a direct view into my backyard, patio, and even the interior of my home through rear-facing windows. Simple activities such as gardening, barbecuing, or relaxing with family now feel like public performances. My family's reasonable expectations of privacy has been permanently erased. I have consulted with local real estate professionals that attributes a lot...
And today I'd like to share with you my thoughts on exercise and what seniors go through. As I've been getting older, I've noticed I'm not quite as strong as I was when I was younger, so I've been trying to learn to still hop along. When I retired, it wasn't long before I realized that I would be getting quite as, that I wouldn't be getting quite as much exercise. So I learned to go for a walk and did so every day, and I got used to bending over and picking up pennies along the way. I even walk here to City Hall to read to you my rhymes, and so far, I've walked here and back home well over 100 times. Walking is a good exercise for most people to do, and when you walk somewhere, you have, you save money on gasoline, too. Back in 2010, I was in a car wreck and I lost my ability to walk. I went from wheelchair to walker to crutches and cane, and I gradually learned how to walk. I'd also lost my sense of balance, but I came up with some exercise to improve my sense of balance, and it helped me stabilize. I came up with 12 exercises and did several repetitions each day. It helped me keep my sense of balance, and I still do them today. I started out doing each exercise with repetitions of 10, and over a year, I'd add to some more again and again and again. Doing such exercises regularly is not only healthy to do, but counting them as I do them helps my memory, too. Such exercises have been one of my starting points to help me strengthen my muscles and help to move my joints. It has helped me to walk a mile to a better lifestyle, and it has been worthwhile to help me want a smile. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back, and I'll be walking here that day.
I love it. Thank you, Terry. Great job.
Bob Piccolo, followed by Art Rangel, followed by Christina Mactudis.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
I just, I got your correspondence.
Yeah, should I put the pictures up on the, on this?
Sure, you can.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, dear members of the City Council, I am here as a longtime homeowner at 300 Kilburn Avenue to formally express my deep concern and frustration regarding the severe negative impact that the recently completed five-story apartment complex immediately behind my property has been on both my property value and personal privacy. When the City Council approved this project, we were at the meeting and spoke against it. Prior to construction, my backyard was private, peaceful retreat. Today, I am stared down upon by dozens of residents. Residents' guests on the upper floors have a direct view into my backyard, patio, and even the interior of my home through rear-facing windows. Simple activities such as gardening, barbecuing, or relaxing with family now feel like public performances. My family's reasonable expectations of privacy has been permanently erased. I have consulted with local real estate professionals that attributes a loss of approximately 15 to 25% specifically to the proximity and overwhelming scale of the apartment building. The constant noise and dramatic change in views have rendered my property less desirable to potential buyers. The result is a textbook example of spot zoning that has transferred wealth from long-term homeowners to private developer at the expense of our quality of life and financial investments. I have attached photographs for all you. I would be happy to meet with city staff to discuss this matter further. My family chose to invest in Reno because we believe the city valued stable, livable neighborhoods. I urge you to demonstrate that this is still true by addressing the harm that has already been done and preventing it from happening to others. Thank you for your prompt attention to the serious quality of life and property rights issue. I look forward to your written response within 30 days.
Thank you, Bob. Definitely.
Art Rangel, followed by Christina Mactudis, followed by Stephen White.
Before my time starts, I just want to let the council know how encouraged my wife and I were yesterday at the Veterans Parade, seeing all those young people, patriotic, singing and marching. Oh, it was incredible. Oh, it was incredible. I mean, it made our day.
Yeah, they said that their enrollment is like by 500%.
And we were talking to a veteran who said, we were talking about the draft. He says, we don't need the draft, we've got more people enlisted now than we've ever had.
That's incredible.
In recent, anyway.
Yeah, I'm glad you noticed, because they, they were hoping someone would see them. They were really proud.
Oh, they were there.
Yeah. Thanks, Art.
Anyway, for the record, Art Rangel.
Plus, I got a great photo of Art. Did you? Okay, share it with us.
For the record, Art Rangel, I'm going to speak in reference to the excessive noise generated by the J Resort Festival Grounds on October 31st. I'm going to read briefly, section of your municipal code, section 18.01.1408, relative to permissible noise levels. It says noise levels, nighttime noise levels, noise levels shall not exceed 49 decibels at residentially zoned property lines between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Daytime noise levels shall not exceed 65 decibel levels at residentially zoned property lines. Based on the reportings on social media, it appears the excessive noise experienced by residents over the weekend of October 31st from the J Resort is in violation of the Green Open Municipal Code, anti-public nuisance. Please keep in mind that the J Resort Festival Grounds' public notice for the CUP was given to property owners 750 feet away, not one, two, three, or four miles away. The excuse given for the excessive noise of October 31st was that it was in compliance with the conditions of the CUP. This comment implies that if the city approves any CUP for outdoor music, that would create excessive noise anywhere within the city limits of Reno. That CUP could give away noise level protections provided to residentially zoned properties as well as property zoned plan unit development in Somerset, Collin Ranch, DeMonte Ranch, or other communities within the city. Such policies could expose thousands of residents to prolonged harmful noise causing hearing damage and worse at high sea levels. Taken together, the points I just made effectively render the city's current noise regulations as worthless. As such, a noise ordinance should address and offer clarity to issues of excessive noise anywhere within the city limits of Reno. On October 31st, excessive noise came from the J Resort. In the future, excessive noise could come from an establishment that was granted a CUP within Somerset, DeMonte Ranch, Lakewood, or other parts within the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Art. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Christina Mactudis, followed by Stephen White, followed by Osvaldo Jimenez.
Hi, my name is Christina Mactudis, and I live in northwest Reno. This accident happened on March 17th of this year and would have gone unnoticed except, and the reason I am making this public comment, is because of a story I saw on KRNV News Channel 4 on October 30th of this year. The story headline is, "Why Was DUI Charge Dropped in Case Against Off-Duty Reno Firefighter Who Caused Crash." I read the story expecting an answer to the question in the headline, but the story just raised more questions. This is a direct quote from the news article. "The arrest report shows that a Reno Fire Department ambulance drove Price, who was in his uniform at the time of the crash, to Renown Hospital. News 4 Fox 11 reached out to the city of Reno to ask if it is allowed under city policy for a city agency to transport one of its own employees. A city spokesperson said, 'The city doesn't have an official policy,' but that it's not uncommon for RFD to transport its own to ensure the patient receives immediate, continuous medical care from responders who are already on the scene. I believe the important word in that statement is 'immediate' because here is a timeline for the timeline provided in the story. At 12:55 PM, Price calls 911 to report he was involved in a crash in the 2300 block of Avenue de Delanda. Then at 1:00 PM, Reno police officers were dispatched to the crash. At 1:51, Sparks Police Department contacted and asked to take over the investigation. To 50:00 PM, which is now 1 hour and 55 minutes after the accident, Price agrees to a preliminary breath test and blows a .161 blood alcohol content. And then at 3:00 PM, Price consents to an evidentiary blood test and a paramedic takes two vials of blood. In that statement, the key word is 'paramedic.' The question I have is why was Mr. Price still under the care of the paramedic rather than at the hospital two hours after the crash? That is not immediate care. That shows a delay in transport to the hospital. I do not, am I out of time? Sorry. I do not know this to be a fact, but in the comments on either the News 4 website or their Facebook page, a person wrote that it was odd that Mr. Price was initially in a Remza ambulance, but the Reno Fire Department arrived, removed Mr. Price from the ambulance, and transported him. And Reno police allowed it. This is shocking because police also observed bloodshot and watery eyes and found a mostly consumed pint of vodka on the floorboard of his car, according to the arrest report obtained by Fox News and Channel 4. Can I finish?
Yeah, go.
Lastly, another person commented that Mr. Price is still actively working for RFD as an operator, which the post explained is a driver of the large fire engines, I did not know that, and with two prior DUIs and this accident where impairment was suspected, why is he still driving for the Reno Fire Department? I personally live in northwest Reno. My son used to drive this road every day on his bike to get to school, and I have stopped it because I feel unsafe knowing that Mr. Price is still out there driving a fire truck. I thank you for your time."
We will, our city manager is going to reach out to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Stephen White, followed by Osvaldo Jimenez, followed by Dennis Garcia.
Can I ask Nathan to come up and join me?
Yes, please.
Yes, we would love that.
Mayor.
Nathan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you watching out for the bunnies?
Of course I am, always. Our favorites.
Good morning, all of you.
I'm trying to speak louder so you can hear me. Can you hear me?
I can almost, I got new hearing aids. I can almost hear you.
Oh, good, okay.
I brought a photograph last time, but you weren't here. And Nathan and I put this sculpture up in the park a few weeks back. I brought you all a photograph of it. Did you give all, you all have a photograph of that? So what I'm hoping is, you know, this can provide, I want to tell you, the last time I was here, when I left, I walked down the sidewalk to the garage, a young man came walking up the sidewalk pulling a little cart full of paintings. And I stopped, of course, to start talking to him, and he shook my hand, got paint all over my hand. And I thought, well, that's typical, you know, an artist. And he was taking his paintings and setting them down on the sidewalk and leaning against the wall. And it said to me, you know, the creator had given me the message that these things are needed. You know, we need these venues in all of our public parks, not just here in Nevada, or not just here in Reno, but all over Nevada. And Nathan is helping me now. We might be able to get this to all of the park managers all over the state. And if we can spread this all over the state, Mayor, we can give you an entire package that you can take to the National Mayor's Conference and show them not only the state law and the federal law and explain it to them, but also show them venues that they can put up in the parks for artists to be able to display their artwork and share the beauty of their artwork with the community. Why aren't we doing this all over the country? It's needed, you know? We need this for our kids. We need this for senior citizens, you know? It's a wonderful thing. This one cost me roughly $1,000, just under $1,000, and I had to pay retail for everything. There's a good chance Nathan and Mayor could work with the company that I got these security panels from, and they might just donate them to us, you know? And these things anchor down to the ground, they can be moved around, there's, you know, they're anchored to the ground with metal spikes. The umbrella part of it is attached to the framework all the way around, so it's not going to blow away or anything. In the wintertime, they could remove the umbrella very easily. But, and also, these venues could be put in around, in different parks, but also along the Riverwalk, wherever you want to have artists displaying their artwork, you could have these for a very minimal cost. I'm hoping that you'll start out with funding this in the tune of maybe $10,000. We could reproduce this at least 10 times and put these around the parks. Now considering the amount of money you've spent on sculptures, you know, considering the amount of money you've spent on doggy parks and things and sports venues, I'm hoping it's not too much to ask. You might come up with $10,000 and help fund this whole thing and get this going in the parks. Let's give our kids venues to hang their artwork and display their artwork. And this is the last one I have, and I wanted to give this one to Nathan.
Oh, thank you.
And I appreciate Nathan.
I love that. Nathan's the best.
He's my artist apprentice.
Nathan's awesome.
I don't want you to give the money to me, I want you to give the money to Nathan and Park and Rec so that he and I can work together and create more of these sculptures. And there again, remember, it's a sculpture done by a pretty notorious artist, and therefore you can use funding from the 2% allocated for the arts every year. No reason why you can't use some of that money to.
I think it would be cool to do sort of an entrepreneurs competition, and I'll tell you why. Because this is a real need for cities across the country. I looked high and low, I asked every mayor I know, there is nothing that is, and they have to follow guidelines, too, because obviously, as you know, with weather, but also setup, how you store them. I mean, everything has to be like at a certain commercial grade, so that, A, they're safe, but also you can take them up, put them down. So there's like these requirements. But there's a lot of welders in the city, there's a lot of artists in the city, there's a lot of entrepreneurs in the city. It would be great to do some sort of contest, because quite honestly, you could make a business out of this, selling this to cities across the country. It is phenomenal. And like I said, I searched high and low, and as you know, I served on arts, parks, entertainment, and sports, so I had a myriad of resources, and I couldn't find a thing. So this is phenomenal. We got to do it, and we're going to figure it out, because it gives everyone an opportunity to create.
You know, my entire artistic career started with a butterfly.
Yes, it did.
My mom gave me a butterfly when I was eight years old. Seventeen years later, the first work of art I ever created was using that little butterfly. And my entire life is an example of the butterfly effect.
Yeah.
You know, it's reached all the way around the world. The beating of the wings of a butterfly can, theoretically through physics, can result in a storm, a hurricane on the other side of Earth. And I'm hoping we can spread this. That's why it's titled Mushroom of the Butterfly Effect.
I love it.
God bless you all, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Osvaldo Jimenez. Followed by Dennis Garcia, followed by Jamie Chapman via Zoom.
Madam Mayor.
Hi, good morning.
City Council, good morning. How are you guys? My name is Osvaldo Jimenez Estupiñán, and I'm the Director of Hispanic Latinx Community Relations at the University of Nevada Reno. I'm happily here today to give thanks to the City of Reno and the Arts and Culture Commission for their continued support with Dia de los Muertos celebration on campus. Dia de los Muertos has been a longstanding event celebrated on campus for over 23 years, and it's been a partnership through the city for over 10 years. I can't stress how important this event is because it helps bring in community members and individuals that may have not seen the university as accessible prior. We had over 800 attendees this year.
Wow.
I saw Councilmember Martinez and his family there, thank you. Over 800 attendees this year. Hug High School students were also a partner in this event, and they led craft tables and activity tables that were all free and open for children, families, and the entire community. At one point, I had 10 little kids run up to me to ask me if we were going to play a song from Coco. So the highlight of the event for me was having those kids run up to the front of the stage so they could do the sing-along to Proud Corazón.
Oh.
I can't stress enough how moments like this help break down barriers for families and children to access the campus. So again, we want to thank the City of Reno and the Arts and Culture Commission for their support with Dia de los Muertos. This continued support from the city is the reason that we're able to keep this event going, and I can't express how much that means to us. So thank you, guys.
That is fantastic. That's awesome. I want to say, Councilman Martinez, thank you so much. I think a lot of times we don't know about ways that we can support our events, and I was not familiar with this one until Councilman brought it. And so I just, I think it's important to continue to support you guys in ways that we typically haven't done in the past. So this is great. 800 attendees, that's huge.
800, it's like 850, but yeah.
That is huge.
Thank you guys so much for this support.
That's so cool. All right, you guys, well, thank you so much. Good job.
Dennis Garcia, followed by Jamie Chapman via Zoom.
Good morning. Hello.
How you doing?
Pretty good. Just another beautiful morning, even though it's cloudy, but still kind of has a beautiful morning, right?
Hey, we're all awake to see it, so good morning.
Good morning. So yeah, so first starters, I am Dennis Garcia. I am the Latino Student Advisory Board President, as well as the For Codeo Sima de Plaza Treasurer, and my major is Math and Education, I'll be a math teacher.
Wow.
And yeah.
Hello, everybody. My name is Emilio Esparza. I am currently an undergraduate studying mechanical engineering, and I am the Vice President of the Latino Student Advisory Board.
Wow.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Estrella Maya. I am a current undergrad for international business with a focus in finance, and later wished to pursue my master's in business administration. I also hold a position in the Latino Student Advisory Board as the Media Coordinator.
That's so cool.
Thank you so much. And first and foremost, I would like to express my gratitude to Councilmember Miguel, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Anderson, and as well as Mayor Madam and everyone else here, present, for giving us first opportunity for us to speak here today. And for, I know it's been almost a year since I last came, and it's kind of crazy as well as today, because I have not met another person named Dennis, so every time they're saying Dennis, I'm like, oh, is that me? No, not yet. So with that said, I wanted to share with y'all an extraordinary opportunity that has profoundly impacted our students, the United States Hispanic Leadership Institution, which is a Ushie Conference that is held annually in Chicago. Last semester, with the generous support of Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember Anderson, and as well as everybody else here, we were able to reportedly say that we took six students to this conference, or six to seven. And with that, I am proud to say that three of those students last semester graduated and followed their dreams and careers, and that helped with this conference because it helped them create, learn and learn, as well as leadership, networking opportunities. And as of now, from what I've heard, they're acting in their own career thanks to the Ushie Conference. And therefore, which is what I'm also here to say, is investing in student organizations and activities such as LCEP is not merely about funding trips, it's about investing in leadership, community, and the future Reno. These experience equip beyond the, you know, classroom, all these skills, and when students grow into these opportunities, they return to our community more confident, more capable, and giving the community back. So which is why we're here once again. As well as, everyone here has been a student, an undergrad, a. As well as, everyone here has been a student, an undergrad, a graduate student, right? And you know how hard it is to get funding to go to these type of conferences. So here I am, again, requesting aid to help bring as many, as much students as possible.
Is it okay if I talk?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Just want to tell you a little bit about what the club has done for me, organization, excuse me. I grew up in a Latino-centric family, but I went to schools with predominantly non-Latino students. So that was a big part of my identity, learning how to express myself as a Latino student. I'm a Mexican student, Mexican-American, I'm proud of that fact as well. This organization has helped me immensely in not only understanding myself, but being proud and expressing my culture and all the beautiful things that come with it. And seeing a lot of Latino students on campus, we're quite divided unfortunately, but this club and organization has helped me and others come together representing our cultures. And I just wanted to bring that opportunity to students who are all pursuing higher education and wanting to not only meet other Latino students, but also as well, meeting representatives of their careers and understanding and learning from those people who have already done it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, it's always a pleasure, and hopefully get to hear, get to see you all here again.
Dennis, great job, all of you guys, I mean, you're future leaders. I'm just curious, why is there a divide? You said there was a divide, I'm just.
So unfortunately, what I've seen, and many other students have said that, are Latino students aren't together. We're very separate from each other. There's a lot of us on campus, but we barely see each other, talk to each other. Me, for example, me being an engineering student, there's not many of us, unfortunately. So it feels pretty lonely, honestly, having to go to classes and not being, speak Espanol con mi gente, and just not being able to see or express my culture, people that know me or who look like me, who speak the same language as I do. That's what I mean by divide, it's unfortunately, we are all kind of separate, and my goal, being the Vice President coming in, was to help bridge that division and bring the students together, and hopefully create an environment where they feel safe and comfortable being themselves.
Oh my gosh, I love it. You guys also run for office, this is our future right here. You guys are our future leaders, amazing. Please let us know how we can support you. You know, even in the smallest of ways, it's always good to, when you come with an ask, to dial it down exactly what you need, because then it's much easier. So fantastic job, you guys.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Councilman Martinez. Thank you very much. Again, look at how important it is to have someone that represents you on this council. This should be a defining moment of why this is important to elect leaders that are just diverse, right? So again, Councilman Martinez, fantastic, good job. And he's so humble, he's not saying a word because he's so humble and so kind and very genuine, so, but we appreciate it. All right, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Good job. Come anytime.
Our final public commenter is Jamie Chapman via Zoom.
All right, Jamie, with the Midtown District, come on, over the speaker. Madam Clerk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Perfect. Jamie Chapman, for the record, with Midtown. So I, hello, Madam Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to come on here and tell you guys thank you, thank you to Councilmember Miguel Martinez for sponsoring $1,000 towards the Midtown Snowflakes this year, and to Councilmember Devin Reese for donating $400. These snowflakes were a huge, huge lift for us, and without you guys, we couldn't have done it. Actually, just as of this morning, we've officially broken even to the penny to pay to install our snowflakes, which is huge, and we're very excited, and we're planning to have them up the Monday before Thanksgiving. And so, we would like to invite all of City Council to Midtown for Shop Small Saturday on November 29th to support all the local businesses, get your holiday gifts, and enjoy the snowflakes that will be up.
Okay, that's awesome. Jamie, explain exactly what that event is, so people know where.
Shop Small Saturday?
Yeah, where they're going, and the time, and all of that.
Perfect, yeah, so it's from 10 until 1, and we are doing a scavenger hunt. So people run, they come to the Midtown Welcome Center inside of Reno Public Market, and they get a free tote and a QR code to download the map, and then they go, use the map, go to all the different businesses that are offering specials. And when they go into the business, it'll automatically track them and check them in, and they'll get entered to win a raffle prize. We have like huge raffles this year, I think it's, I mean, like a $100 gift card, $50 gift cards, a Silver Nevada necklace. Last year, we had over 400 people participate, so we're looking to grow that. It's important to support locals, especially right now.
That's awesome. Okay, just to clarify, these are restaurants all throughout the district, not just in Reno Public Market, correct?
Correct. This is Midtown as a whole, and it's restaurants and retail stores, any business within Midtown, that's a Midtown member.
Okay, that's awesome, and I'll make sure that I also help support your snowflakes. Thanks for the reminder.
Madam Mayor. Yes, go ahead.
Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, hey, Jamie, I just wanted to mention, hi, this is Naomi Doer. I just wanted to mention that a number of years ago, myself with the assistance of my liaison Brad, we set up a program called Midtown Holiday Parking. And what we did was, we went and contacted five businesses with open parking in Midtown that was not typically full up, but was not, you're not allowed to park there typically. And we got them to agree from Thanksgiving, like this event, through after Christmas, to allow free parking in their parking lots. Everybody got a sticker, they could get it at one of the five businesses, and this would allow them to park in any of the five parking lots. And it might be time to take another look at that program, revamp it. And it worked really well, you know, and it could be part of your advertising to get people out shopping in Midtown. So if you're interested, or any council members are interested, I could check in with you later.
I'm super interested in that, that's actually a great idea, as you know, we get, that's a huge complaint we always get, is about parking.
Right.
I love that idea.
So this took open parking lots that are there, but signaled that you can't park there, and opened them to parking by anyone, anytime, with the sticker. So it helped the businesses, those five, and it provided parking, so.
That's great, I love that, yeah, I would love to get more information about that.
We posted a map on the City of Reno website, so people would know, as an extra way to get the word out, so.
Oh, that's awesome, yeah, that must have happened, I've been with Midtown for four years, so it was like right before me.
Yeah, it was right before.
That's awesome, thank you for sharing.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Okay, reach out to Jamie, Naomi.
What's that?
Will you reach out to Jamie?
Oh, I will.
Okay, great. All right.
All right, Madam Mayor.
I believe, is that our last public comment?
That was our last public commenter. We did receive correspondence, written correspondence to our office, four letters of opposition and 12 letters of concern, those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on reno.gov/meetings. So we're now moving into item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
Okay, before we do that, I'm going to send it over to our City Manager, Ms. Jackie Bryant, for some, any housekeeping notes or anything on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we're going to proceed in the order posted unless the Mayor decides to move things around based on the number of attendees in the audience, as always, and during the break today, we will have a labor briefing and attorney client.
Okay, and actually, I am, I am going to move up, hold on one second, I'm going to move up item C2, because we have people that need to get to the airport, and then we will take, so we're going to take item C2 under Department Items first, and then C1 will be a presentation from RTC.
Move to approve.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right.
Item A5, Approval of the Amendments.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, second, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, would you like to take your consent-pold items and then move to C2?
That would be fantastic.
Okay, so we're on item B, Consent agenda.
Okay, fantastic, thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Anderson.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
Thank you.
Councilman Martinez?
Neither do I, thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
No.
Councilman Reese?
B12, please.
Okay, and then we have Councilwoman Ebert. Are you there?
Yes, no, no, I am at this time, thank you.
Move to approve all remaining items.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we will come back to item B12 after our presentations and other council business. All right, at this time, we're going to head into item C2, and I am excited to welcome the team from the RSCVA and Mr. Rick Murdoch, and then one of my favorite people in the world, she's going to hate this, but Ms. Rhonda Lee. She's wonderful, I'm super, super fortunate to work with her. And I see over there hiding, I didn't even see you, Christina Ernie, back there, all you guys, it's great to see you. Okay, so Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comment and have not received any correspondence on this item.
Okay, fantastic. I'm going to send it right to you, Ms. Ernie, take it away.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Council, Ashley Attorney Assistant City Manager for the record today, I'm here to introduce this item, then we'll turn it over to the RSCVA to give you more specifics and for you to be able to ask questions. The item in front of you today is a request from the RSCVA and the United States Bowling Congress, make sure I get that correct into the record, they're requesting an amendment to the existing contract, thanks to note that this is not a brand-new contract, this is an amendment of the existing one. We are here today because this request came through the Bowling Congress to RSCVA and to us. This contract amendment needs approval from all three entities for it to be effective. The RSCVA voted to approve this item on October 23rd at their board meeting. There are some amendments being proposed, I'll go over them at a high level and then turn them over to Mike Lara Guedes, the President's CEO, to be able to go into that in more detail. This is a five-year amendment that is being requested, the current contract is set to expire in 2033. There's a request to extend the tournament schedule, they would like to increase the bowler site fee, this removes the damages clause, if the Bowling Congress cancels a tournament, it also allows for food and beverage profit sharing between the RSCVA and the Bowling Congress. With that, we do have your motion, however, I will turn it over at this time to Mike Lara Gueda from the RSCVA, he does have a presentation, I believe IT has available, and you can ask questions.
Okay, fantastic, Mr. Lara Gueda, welcome.
Great. Good morning, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mike Lara Gueda for the record, RSCVA. Before I jump in, it's my pleasure to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to present the details of the Seventh Amendment to the United States Bowling Congress and the City of Reno and the RSCVA contract. Before I go into the details of what is being proposed, and the concessions, and the terms in the agreement, I wanted to share with council some background in terms of the impact that the United States Bowling Congress has on our community. We held the Women's Championship in 2024 from April 27th to June 29th. This tournament produced 14,800 bowlers, over 34,000 room nights, 3,700 teams, had a room tax impact of over half a million dollars, and an increase to capital of $54,000, with an overall impact of $26,329,577. The upcoming tournament, the Open Championship, and this tournament is generally three times the size of the Women's Championship. And before I go into the details of the numbers that are produced and we're anticipating starting this March, this is a validation of the unified efforts of what we can do when we get ahead of it. And when I speak to that, what I'm referencing is the efforts of the RSCVA, the efforts of the United States Bowling Congress, the efforts of participating hotels, specifically the Headquarter Hotels, Hotels at the Row, the things that we addressed in advance that became relevant and important to the bowlers. We identified pricing, opportunities of restaurant hours, we got ahead of the social media and marketing and advertising platforms, we went ahead and purchased a booth and exhibited at the 2025 Open Championship in Baton Rouge, we sent representatives from the RSCVA and the Row for over two weeks and worked this booth and talked to bowlers and pushed the importance of coming to Reno. And the collective efforts of all of these entities involved has produced numbers that we have not seen in Reno since 2011. We are anticipating over 55,000 bowlers north of 140,000 room nights, our number now is about 11,500 teams. In fact, USBC went and extended the tournament by two weeks because of the demand we are seeing for the Open Championship in '26. The estimated room tax, $2.8 million, capital, $220,000, and an economic impact of over $87 million. Again, these numbers, to kind of put things in perspective, like the mayor, I'm very competitive, our team is very competitive, these numbers are forecasted to surpass the Open Championship numbers in 2024, held in our friends down south, Las Vegas. So a huge feat to the teams that are involved in these numbers. This is an idea, the three years that are being proposed to extend to the existing USBC contract would be two open championships and one Women's Championship in the years of 2035, '36, and '38. The estimated impact of those three tournaments represents almost 125,000 bowlers, 312,000 room nights, over 25,000 teams, a room tax estimate over $6.5 million, capital of almost a half a million dollars, and an overall economic impact over $202 million. Jumping into the concessions and terms that are being requested by USBC, again, what we will receive as a destination, three additional tournaments starting in '35, going in '36, and then coming back with an Open Championship in '38. We will also be awarded one United States Bowling Convention sometime between the years of 2028 and '38, and then in addition to that, 10 incremental tournaments outside the dates of the United States Bowling Congress Women's and Opens Championship. Each one of these events is forecasted to produce approximately 1,500 room nights, for a total of 15,000 additional room nights, again, in the off-years or off-dates of a Women's and Men's Championship. What we would be providing USBC as concessions to extend this amendment and the contract is we would be removing the liquidated damages language in the agreement, and all of these concessions and rewards that we're receiving start in 2029. The RSCVA will be increasing the site fee from $30 to $36, that is coming out of the RSCVA budget starting in 2029. And then we are also anticipating to help them from a revenue standpoint by starting a 15% commission on all food and beverage sales at the National Bowling Stadium during the Women's and Opens Championships. Those are the concessions that we are offering back to them. If these three tournaments and this amendment is approved today, this is what we will be looking at in terms of the schedule starting in 2026. What I want to bring to council's attention is that without this approval, there was conversation of us being going to a five- or six-year rotation after 2033. By approving this and moving forward with this amendment, we will put us in a rotation, with the exception of 2030 and '31, we will never have a vacated time period of more than a year of either having a Women's or Open Championship through 2038. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Something I'm very, very familiar with too, right?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor.
Good job. Okay, Councilman Reese?
Thank you so much, Mr. Lara Gueda.
The only one with your light on, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation, I want to say a couple of things. One is, just a thank you to you and your team for continuing to work through the conditions which we find ourselves in, wherever we are, right? I know that your team works very long and hard hours to make sure that we are attracting top-level investments here by outside groups, and then to keep the ones that we have, so I appreciate that. This one is particularly important, because I think it's one of the cornerstones for our downtown, and it certainly is an important part of our downtown revitalization efforts. I'm absolutely in support of the changes that you've identified, and think that they are a good partner with us. Having served on the committee that's overseen the renovations of the Bowling Stadium over the last several years, I also think it's important to note how much partnership that we've had between the RSCVA, the Row properties, and the City of Reno. Literally, there have been moments where the City of Reno could not fund the important and improved renovations, and had to go out and ask for the assistance of our partners to cover the renovations that need to get done, and then, of course, we paid them back through the fund as the fund became healthy again. But I think that speaks to the importance of this. Now, you said a lot of numbers, and I know you're a numbers guy, Mike, it is an important part of this. I'm not sure they tell the whole story, and in part because I look at the downtown properties that are there, not only at the Bowling Stadium, but the adjacent properties with the event not only at the bowling stadium, but the adjacent properties with the event center, the ballroom, and just think about the ways in which they are important to engage the downtown core. You know, downtown is a neighborhood, a special neighborhood with some unique issues with it. And you've heard a lot lately about some of those issues. But one of the things you never hear about is, man, we don't like having the bowlers here, right? And I see the bowlers here when they are here, and it's like hordes of, we'll just say, the one most recently, hordes of Minnesota moms and grandmothers wandering around in packs who are shopping in our stores, eating in our restaurants, tipping our employees, hopefully leaving some money behind in the casinos. And I think that's an important part of what we really need for downtown Reno. It's certainly a component of how we continue to thrive and drive the economic development that I think is important for our region. What would you say about the overall impact of bowling? I don't know, I'm sure you've looked at it from inception. Has to be in the billions. It's a big number.
It is, and thank you for the comments, Councilman Reese. So just to kind of put things in perspective, the bowlers have been coming to Reno under the umbrella of ABC since 1977 out of the Old Centennial Coliseum at the convention center. Obviously, they shifted to the bowling stadium in '95. And then 2012 is when we drafted the agreement with USBC moving forward as it relates to the capital. But yes, if you look at the overall time period that bowlers have been coming here from '77, the number is in the billions. And to your point, to add some context as it relates to, and I didn't touch on because I did focus really on the data, is that the bowlers not only provide an impact in terms of room nights, economic impact, but to your point, they are eating in their restaurants, they are visiting retail, they are staying in other hotels. And a term that we use constantly in the hospitality industry is they're creating what we call compression. And when you have a foundation, a base of bowlers that are here over six months, the outlining properties, they may not see the volume of room nights that maybe the Row or the J may say because obviously of logistics and being downtown, but it creates a base and a foundation that allows other properties to yield their rates. And it comes back to the rising tide floats all boats, so it's actually beneficial for everybody. And then the last point I would like to make is the impact that the bowlers may or may not have as it relates to future growth and airlift. If we take 55,000 bowlers out of the equation in 2026, for instance, those are 55, approximately, probably 80% of that number of airline seats that are going vacant. And airlines are obviously looking for yield and they're looking for capacity and occupancy on their aircraft. And if Reno is not producing those seats, they're going to find another city to put those planes in.
Yeah.
Well, and I think Madam Mayor and I discussed this, and certainly Mr. Culpen, having been at the airport for many years, knows well that those are irreplaceable, right? And we're looking at our airport expansion, we're trying to fund the renovations there. We need to have consistent passenger counts in our region in order to justify the airlines who would keep those routes instead of move them elsewhere. And certainly, my hope is that it generates the interest in keeping additional routes. I continue to want a route to return to New York City, for example, which is seasonal at times. Look, as a lawyer, I look at contracts, I think about them as agreements. They're only as good as the partners in them, right? And we've found incredible partners in the Bowling Congress, in the RSCVA. Certainly, the Caesar Entertainment is an incredible partner of the City of Reno. I think all of these things are very minor things that we're exchanging in exchange for the benefit of having the other things that you've identified on the slide. There's just no question that it's a great opportunity for Reno. Happy to support.
And I think you bring up such a good point because I do want to point this out because we really forget this. And Mr. Murdoch knows, he's the king of air service. They love him. Thank God for Rick, he's brought in so many flights into our region. But if we don't have these flights, then it's really hard to get other flights. And people are always saying to me, Mayor Sheevy, why don't we have this flight and that flight? It's impossible to get unless you're really paying attention to your existing air service flights. I learned that from Mr. Rick Murdoch, for sure. And so that is a really important aspect of it. Yeah, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, so I recently accompanied the airport on a headquarter visit in Dallas to Southwest Airlines. And one of the most important takeaways from that meeting was we identified the, what they call basically heat map, of where the bowlers are coming from for the '26 tournament. And of everything that we presented in the hour and a half that we had with them, that was the topic they were most interested in. They want to know where the bowlers are coming from so they can assure that they have the lift to provide to get them here.
Yeah, absolutely. And since I'm on the board, I should probably provide just a little bit of feedback in sort of how we're here and all this came to be. I want to remind everyone, I believe they started here in 1972?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy, oh, seventy-seven. So think about that, seventy-seven, and the agreement was till '12. And one of the things, because they've been coming here so long, we just assume they're coming. And they have been such phenomenal partners of ours that when the clause went in there, it created a little, I think, distrust with all of us and our partnership and relationship. So what's the total years? And then I would say that clause was not in there for 45 years.
Correct, it went into effect in 2012. And the purpose why that clause was added was there were significant capital improvements that were needed within the stadium because the stadium obviously opened in '95. So you now have a building that's been open for 17 years. And so it was tired, it needed some modifications and upgrades. And so as part of the amendment in 2012, there were several projects that were identified that needed to be completed between 2012 and 2018. And therefore, the clause was added to make sure to protect an investment.
Yeah, and the other thing I want to point out is with talking these negotiations over, and obviously, we have to go to the different boards. However, we got extensions. But one of the biggest ones that I should point out is the General Services Agreement, going to our board and getting that passed. And that's important because it also goes up every year. I want to say thank you to our city manager, Jackie. You are just an incredible fiscal hawk. She's, no, she's amazing. But the reason why that is important is in this ask, we would ask that the GSA goes away. Currently, it's 350, it goes up every time they're here.
Correct.
And that would be in perpetuity. And so that's what I'm going to make a motion for at our board. And I think that's a huge win for the City of Reno. And the reason why it is is because that money comes from the general fund. And that is a big deal when it hits your general fund. So in the amount of three years, that would be cover the million dollars, right?
Correct.
And so there's really no comparison on the economic impact that it creates. And I think Councilman Reese said it really well. Those agreements, anyone could take you to court and bring back, you know, sort of any contract in any capacity, right? So I think this is a really, really strong partnership. I want to continue to have that relationship with them because it's been, it's been pretty phenomenal and we're lucky to have that economic impact right in downtown where we need it the most.
Agree. And if I could just make a quick comment as it relates to the General Services Agreement. So we have already had our preliminary discussions internally with the senior staff of how we were going to modify our budget internally to make that work, and we're all very comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, I want to head over to Councilwoman Doer, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And Mike, I just really wanted to compliment you on a couple of things that are minor in scope but major to me. One, your presentation was eminently readable. We don't often get that. And I also noted that you gave us an extra sheet with all the details on it. That is so helpful when we are quite a distance from this to be able to see it. And not only see it, but it made sense. And I particularly want to call out these multi-multi-millions of dollars of economic impact that the Bowling Congress and the events bring in. I mean, you're not going to see that from almost anything else. I can't think of anything else in our community that brings in this kind of economic impact and spread over a period of time typically when we're darker. It's darker outside, it's darker in our buildings, and we have fewer events. Number two, I just wanted to thank you for your time because I did, going into this, have a couple of questions. I don't serve on this board, I'm not familiar with the day-to-day. What I'm mostly familiar with is people saying, why can't we go bowling at the bowling stadium? The regular people in Reno. And I know that's begun to change. I've been invited to several charity events that have been held at the bowling stadium to raise funds. I think even the mayor-sponsored one for animals. But there have been, I think, numerous, over 10 or 12 or 15 in the last couple of years. So I hope we can continue that because that is a great use of a facility. And buildings don't like to stand empty any more than people like to not have friends, you know? It's a good thing to have people in there and using a facility, you know, keeping it current. So I just wanted to thank you for your time. I got through the agreement, got to understand the changes. I'm very comfortable with it, and I wanted to thank you for, you know, leaning in to figure out what these details needed to be. And also the earlier point you made about why, you know, some concerns that the Bowling Congress legitimately had after their last event, or their big event in 2023, I believe it was, and how you worked to address them specifically.
Correct.
So that those kind of issues could be repaired and those relationships could be repaired. And we could continue in a positive way together. So just a huge thank you to you and your team, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Ebert, you have your light on, yeah.
So I have a few things that I just kind of want some clarity on. I know there is a lot of information here, but if you could just kind of like explain the why on some things for me. So, or just how it works. So if the bowling group, the USBC, did not honor this contract, would we have any way to sue for damages? Or would it just be like, oh, they didn't show up, they breached their contract? Would we have any kind of legal recourse if they didn't show up?
So the current agreement, which would be, if this amendment was not approved, they would have the ability, we would have the ability, should the United States Bowling Congress vacate a contracted tournament and hold that tournament within the same year in another jurisdiction, we could go after them for liquidated damages.
Yes, I'm asking under the new agreement. What, are we able, would we be able to, would we have any legal recourse if they said, we're not coming, we're not going to honor our contract under the new terms? Would we be able to sue them for anything?
We would not, we would be eliminating that, that language from the agreement, so yes.
So we couldn't say, you're in breach of contract, we are going to, you know, go after you?
From a legally standpoint, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe not, no. Now, that being said, just again, to add some context to that, back to the point of how long we have been partnered with the United States Bowling Congress and looking at every jurisdiction where they have held a tournament, they have never canceled.
I understand, I understand.
They've never canceled based on performance, right?
Yeah, I was just curious if, you know, because breach of contract usually, you know, there's, you can kind of have some.
I would defer to an attorney, but my assumption is that if the language is removed, that we would not have grounds to go after them.
Okay, and you had mentioned that the existing clause was put in place because of upgrades that were needed to the facility in the late 90s. Well, I noticed that the, the changes that were made in the fourth agreement in '22 were updated to include required facility upgrades, to include replacing of bowling lanes on the first and fourth floor to be completed by January 2029. Have those all been completed?
They have. And so the only remaining item from a capital perspective that's in the agreement is, and it was actually moved due to COVID and the changing of the dates of the tournaments, would be replacement of all 88 lanes. That's the 78 on the main floor and the 10 in Kingpin in 2029. And that is funded by the surcharge, which we met with the surcharge committee a little over a month ago. And based on the funds they have allocated, that is covered significantly.
Okay, so we have the funds available to pay for replacing of all the lanes currently, even if they don't show up?
If they don't, if they were not to show up, we wouldn't replace the lanes because you wouldn't have usage.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right.
Okay. City Manager Bryant, did you want to weigh in?
I just wanted to make a clarification for the record so that we're clear. What the RSCVA, with the current proposed agreement is, is an elimination of liquidated damages, not all damages. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so to Councilwoman Ebert's question, just to make sure we are all on the same page, the liquidated damages simply says that there's an automatic payment and damages are still allowed pursuant to any contract because you can't really waive those. So there still could be damages, it's just not as easy to obtain, it's just not as quick.
Again, I believe that is correct. I would defer to an attorney based on their interpretation of the agreement, but yes.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know that we've welcomed Mr. Peters here.
Chad, we were trying not to embarrass him.
Well, I'm going to embarrass him.
You're trying not to embarrass poor Chad.
But I did bring cheerleaders.
I'm going to embarrass him because the only way I got through physics in college was cheating off of this man's papers. So, thank you for that. Yeah, yeah, it didn't do me any good, I'm not sure, but. Okay, as a region, I understand the value of the bowlers. And I also understand that Reno, we have a responsibility to keep them here. We don't just get to assume and take for granted that the Bowling Congress or the bowlers want to spend time here. So I'm curious if you would be willing to share a little bit more detail about what you learned, about how Reno really had to step up, get ahead. What were some of the things that we needed to address to make sure that we, that bowlers wanted to come back to Reno? Because that's the number one thing we need to remember is, yeah, we have a bowling stadium, but they still have to come to Reno. So what were some of those things?
Thank you for the question and the comments. First of all, this is a competitive landscape. Just like we do, and we're trying to book conventions from all over the country, we're competing with cities everywhere. Bowling is similar. There are other cities, and USBC is soliciting other cities for proposals as well. There was an offer on the table to pay them over $2 million to go to a certain city starting in '28. And so we had to, one, address that in our discussions with them. As it relates to your question on what were the important factors in ensuring and giving the bowlers confidence that Reno was somewhere they wanted to come back to, not just for '26 and the years that are contracted, but extended contract was value, was helping with the assistance to get here and working with the airlines, was working with our stakeholders and the host hotels about their pricing and their hours of operation and the value that they're offering the bowlers. I mean, one thing I can say over the numerous years that I've been in and out of this market is when you go back to the 90s and the early 2000s, the offers and the values that Mr. Murdoch and the Coronos were giving the bowlers was similar to what is now being offered at South Point in Las Vegas. It was about value. And we learned our lesson to Councilman Ebert's point about what happened in '23. We probably took advantage of a situation, to the mayor's comments, of that the bowlers are just coming. And we were in a position where we outpriced ourselves. And it almost jeopardized this, jeopardized our partnership with the bowlers moving forward. Thank God, we were able to correct that during halfway through the Open Championship in '23 and then 100% going into '24. And again, that was value, that was pricing, that was added value. That was the cost of food and beverage at the bowling stadium. That was hours of operations within our properties. And now the bowlers are, and again, it's a reflection of what you're seeing in the numbers in '26. We have hit auto correct and we're in a good place right now.
Great, so we have a huge opportunity to be incredible hosts coming this March. We haven't seen this volume of bowlers since 2011, you said. What else can we do as a community to add value and not just to the bowlers, but to their experience overall in the community? Is there anything that you learned in your travels that Reno has the opportunity to really roll out the red carpet in a new and different way?
So a couple of things. One, we have partnered with the airport. We are starting conversations with the airport about the experience, right, sense of arrival, making sure that we are branding the airport. We're asking our properties to brand their properties, welcome the bowlers. This is the largest convention by far that we will do in any year. In addition to that, other ideas that I've seen in other cities is embracing the bowlers from, a lot of times when you go to cities and there's what we call a citywide convention, they have what they call a show your badge program, right? To where if you are there for that conference and you have your badge or you have your credentials, then there's some kind of offer that they are giving. I would love to see, and I'll give a shout out to a city that does an unbelievable job, Columbus, Ohio. They have a district next to the convention center of restaurants. And when they have a big convention in town, you will see boards and chalkboards and messages on windows and storefronts of, welcome bowlers, buy an appetizer, second one free, whatever it may be, right? Those are the ideas and the concepts where it really makes those bowlers feel like they are welcomed in our community.
Okay. I may have another round, thank you.
Yes, I will come back. And just because I sit on the board and obviously something that, you know, I feel like I live a lot of the RSCVA board. And I wanted everyone to know that we really needed to show that our relationship with, with the bowlers was built on strength and was built on trust. And I think in some ways, it was a little eroded because of that. And we needed to really reset them. And the clause is very, very small compared to what other cities, they would have no problem paying for that business to come here, right? Or go there, is my point. But then on the other side, and I will put this in my motion, is to the caveat of the general services tax so that the city can have that money. the city can have that money back to the general fund in perpetuity of, it goes up every year. So I'm going to get those numbers as well, but right now it's $350,000. And so it's really, I think, very much rooted in a partnership and appreciate having that money come right back to the city. I don't think have this, sometimes there's, you know, things that happen and they're actually good. And this gives us an opportunity at the city of Reno to keep more of our money. I know the RSCVA doesn't love that, but you guys are great partners. And, not that you don't, but I, I think, you know, it really is a good opportunity for the city to get hundreds of thousands and moving forward millions of dollars back into the general fund.
Yeah, and just if you look at the current agreements that are under contract, and if these three years are approved and extended, that alone in terms of $2.5 million in GSA funds, just on those eight tournaments.
Yeah, because they didn't have to. So anyway, I'm grateful for their partnership. Councilwoman Martinez, go right along. Go right ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you for your representation on the RSCVA, and thank you, Mr. Lara Guerra, for being here and kind of explaining similar thoughts to Councilwoman Reese. There's a lot of information and data and numbers in your presentation, so I'm very grateful for you providing the additional prison attachments that are available electronically in our staff packet, but also the print copies that were available to us. I think in terms of looking at this contract, obviously, being on this council, our job is to make sure that the city is in good standing and we're protecting public assets as much as we can. And obviously, the city is the owner of this facility, and we understand that contractually we have to, you know, fix the lanes and replace those by 2029, which the $2 capital surcharge committee is already, has a timeline for that, and looking forward to getting those things up and going. And so I just want to echo some of the comments that Madam Mayor has already made, and asking you to go back to your board to get approval of removing the general services allocation, to make sure we have some of that funding coming back to the general fund for the city of Reno, to make sure that we have enough to spend on other items that we're, we're looking at. I think in terms of the numbers that you've provided, I wanted to get, I didn't see it in the rest of the contract, so I wanted to sort of understand. It sounds like there's sort of a split 60-40 between the city of Reno and the RSCVA of the allocation of net income that happens, depending on if there is like a profit in terms of programming or events that happen in the bowling stadium. Just wondering historically, if any, if that has taken place, or if it's just something that was in the contract, and if it ever does, what those numbers are, if you have those?
Yeah, I don't, thank you for the comments, Councilwoman Martinez. I don't believe that that split is called out within the agreement. I'm not familiar with that, but I'm happy to look into other agreements as it relates to the contract between, the management contract between the city of Reno and the RSCVA on the downtown facilities.
Okay, maybe I've been looking at.
I think, I believe what you're referring to is, is in the GSA agreement, when that agreement was created, it was based on a revenue share if there was profitability.
Yes.
Unfortunately, as with most buildings, the probability of profitability is limited. But I believe that is where the split, and maybe City Manager knows as well.
Yeah, just for the record, you are correct, there is a split. Unfortunately, Reno pays the $350, roughly $1,000, and there's no revenue share on the back end of that because it hasn't been profitable.
Right.
So it's just been a, a payment on an annual basis.
Okay. Yeah, which is understandable. I just want to make sure I understood that clearly. Thanks so much, Manager Bryant. And then in terms of, if I may, Madam Mayor, just one last question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. In terms of the economic impacts that you have been projecting and looking at for the past Open Championships and Women's Championships, who has produced that? And if, have you looked at having anybody else sort of verify the information that you're providing in this presentation?
So this has been produced by our room tax manager, Robert Douglas, who is on staff. He's been doing it for years. He takes several components of data into consideration. We do this for our convention groups as well, the large groups, and looking at the profitability and economic impact. And sometimes we do it in advance based on forecasted numbers so we can determine the value and how much we want to offer that group to bring their business to Reno. But we look at obviously room revenue, ADR, food and beverage spend, we look at gaming, we look at whether it's a fly group or a drive group, we look at the demographic of the group itself in terms of the makeup and their propensity to spend. As it relates to looking to an outside company, we just contracted with Tourism Economics, who is world renowned in producing data for tourism and DCDBs and DMOS all over the country. I'd be happy for them to take a stab at it as well, if that was at the council's request.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there. Not saying that your expert isn't producing the correct information. I just know sometimes, even at the city, we ask other experts to come and verify information that we're seeing, just to make sure that it's lining up. So thank you so much for that consideration. And thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the time.
Okay. Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to ask Assistant Managers Ashley Terny to come up. I just wanted, after listening to my colleagues, I had a couple of questions too, and I wanted to make sure I understood what I'm hearing as far as the protection if something were to happen by removing the damage clause. We feel, moving forward, that the GSA going away, that Madam Mayor was going to put in her motion, and the opportunity for more volume, more bowlers, covers that risk.
Ashley Terny, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Staff feels comfortable that that help gets us closer to the space. We understand the importance of bowling to the community, and I think having the offset of that GSA would be something that is beneficial for us to be able to have some security in that space.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask you, and I think Councilmember Ebert was talking about this a little bit, was we have to replace the lanes in '29, and then we're dark in between that until 2032, I think. The $2 surcharge is going to cover the cost of that capital improvement, correct?
Correct.
So it will not come out of the general fund?
It will not come out of the general fund. It is not able to be backed by the general fund. The general fund would be an ineligible source for that upgrade.
Okay. So we are absolutely confident that $2 surcharge is going to cover that capital improvement?
We are confident the money is in the $2 surcharge fund now, and we anticipate that to continue to grow.
Okay, perfect. And again, by the sheer amount of bowlers that are going to be coming, it looks promising.
I'm just going to fill up the surcharge.
He's going to fill it. I, I wanted to ask a little bit, we still have a lot of debt on this property. Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes.
And that's, how much is that? About 105?
We have three bonds on the three downtown facilities between the ballroom, the event center, and the bowling stadium, and they're coupled, they're not per each unit. Currently, that payoff amount is about $131 million between those three facilities.
Okay.
Those bonds are backed by room tax funds. It's a dedicated room tax source. However, if room tax fails to meet the debt obligation, the general fund is on the hook for those payments.
But according to Mike, we're going to have tons of room nights, so.
Mike is motivated to ensure that room tax stays sufficient for all of us.
Okay, fantastic. Those are my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thanks. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I suppose I want to just put a fine point on something that Manager Bryant said, and I'll sort of direct my attention over here to Mr. Hall. Look, having written contracts of this type for years, it is true that when I went to law school now 25 years ago, when I was 10, I understood what liquidated damages clauses were, and they were pretty routine back in that era of contracting. But today, not so much, right? Everybody can sue anybody anytime they want, anywhere. Liquidated damages clauses were an attempt to fix the damages to a certain number, so you didn't have to prove them up through the process of litigation. Having them in the contract doesn't make it any more or less likely that you sue or that you can recover it. So from my perspective, there is no reason to have it in a contract in that regard, because at the end of the day, if the parties blow apart the agreement for whatever reason, which I don't believe is going to happen, that clause doesn't help us. And so I want to sort of turn now to Mr. Hall or Mr. Shipman, and just make sure that I haven't, you know, misstated some factoid about the law. And it's not so much academic. I want my colleagues to be comfortable with the things that we do at the dais. Ms. Bryant and I have the benefit of having attended law school, so we have some knowledge and comfort with it, and I want to make sure that we share that knowledge with our colleagues.
And for the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office. No, I think that's a fair kind of assessment. I mean, liquidated damages are there in cases where you don't have like really good, solid damage calculations. And, and again, they've been superseded largely in a number of different areas.
Yeah, so Nevada law, we just, most courts disfavor them, because they're just, they are a part of an archaic legal system that doesn't really replicate itself today. And again, the idea was to fix damages on a dollar amount so that people weren't fighting over what the damage amount would be. Not that it replaces damages in any way, because you still have the ability to do that. And so that's why when I looked at it, I said, okay, they're, they're not really asking for much. I think what we get in return is a better relationship with our partner, and also, it's just, it's like language cleanup in my mind. It really doesn't do anything for us that we aren't otherwise doing for ourselves by knitting our relationship together more closely. So hopefully that answers the questions that Ms. Ebert and Ms. Taylor had about this particular kind of clause.
All right. Go ahead, Council.
Councilwoman.
Sorry, I just got, I've got future business questions here.
Councilwoman Anderson, go ahead.
Okay, so two things. So removing the liquid damages clause, to me, makes it clear that we can't be lazy. Our CVA can't be lazy, the city of Reno cannot be lazy, because we are earning this business every single year. And what that tells me is by us getting that GSA budget back, we could be lending our energy, our leadership, and potentially our comms support to creating micro plans with your comms team around these tournaments, to where we're encouraging our community, our restaurants, our bars, our other, you know, other events, you know, in case people do things outside of bowling when they're here for bowling, you know, really rolling out the red carpet for them, or the blue carpet, I should be saying, in northern Nevada, to these bowlers. So I would like to commit to you my interest in any and all ideas that you and your comms team would have, for us to take the ask to our community to really make each and one of these bowling events feel special, so that they know that Reno wants them. Because now, there are no liquefied damages. We, we are on the hook for being the community that they want to keep coming back to. So please be really open and honest about the ways in which we can support you and your team, and hopefully this March, we can knock their socks off.
Welcome that. Thank you. That'd be great.
And that's one of the biggest reasons we have Chad now. You know, he's new to our team, actually. So, no pressure, Chad. Look at his face, he's getting all red. Okay. Green lights on. Councilwoman Ebert, go ahead.
Yeah, so just a couple more questions. There was discussion about getting rid of GSA money that the city of Reno pays to RSCVA. What does GSA stand for?
General Service.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
General Services Agreement.
Okay. And can you tell me just a little bit about what those dollars go towards? Like, I don't need a full itemized list, but what does that money pay for?
It, it's basically an offset of the losses that the RSCVA absorbs through managing the properties.
Okay, so that money goes towards managing the properties, like payroll, or what does it pay for?
I believe it goes back to our general fund as it relates to operating expenses, labor, anything, any, any expense that goes into operating either the Reno event center or the National Bowling Stadium.
Okay, so it's operational, it's not maintenance?
I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not sure without reading the GSA agreement.
Okay.
The City Manager might know.
Okay, so here's.
Way in.
Yes, you are correct. It's basically a payment that the city of Reno pays to RSCVA to manage the bowling stadium.
Okay, and we only pay it if something else doesn't reach a certain limit, or do we pay regardless?
We pay it every year.
Okay.
And if the value of the revenue exceeds the amount, then we get some revenue share back. But Reno is currently on the hook every single year for that amount.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, like, this is not used for some type of maintenance that's going to lead to more damage that we're going to have to pay for later. Like, this analogy that I can think of is like skipping oil changes and then having to pay for a car that broke down later. So I just want to make sure that this is not something that's going to bite us later, because city of Reno's ended up in a lot of deals that sounded great at the time, but ended up not being great deals. So.
Obviously, as the organization that is managing those facilities, just like we manage other, other facilities, if we're going to convert and book business, we have to keep those facilities running in top shape.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So just, you know, want to make sure that you guys can absorb that kind of loss, and we're not going to have, you know, a noticeable decrease in service and maintenance. To Councilmember Anderson's point, we need to stay competitive and stay on top of things. So that's, that's not all the money in the world, but it's also not nothing. So just want to make sure that we stay on top of things to keep everything, you know, up to what the bowlers expect to see in the facilities. So thank you.
Okay. No other, I see, no other lights on. I, I do want to say, I think it's important to point out that every agreement is different based on a lot of different criteria. And one of the things that I think if we all could have the opportunity to see what a longstanding partner would look like, we typically, when we get into agreements, we don't get to see what, sort of who you're dealing with. You take it face value on a piece of paper, and you're, and then you go like this. And for the amount of years, how many years has it been now?
I mean, ABC, under the ABC umbrella, '77 with this building, since '95, the building of the stadium with USBC.
Yeah, so, how many years is that?
30.
Yeah, it's 30 years. Well, two, yeah. So.
The bowlers have been coming for, since '77, so that's 58 years.
So.
But.
But that's my point. A 58-year relationship, we get to see who we are, well, not quite, right?
Forty-eight.
We can, you, we cannot count, Mike.
And I'm usually good with numbers. I'm on the spot.
We cannot.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, math, never, never good for me. But my point is, wouldn't it be incredible to see who your long-term relationships were and how they dealt with contracts and how they dealt with the partnership? And we've had this one for a very, very long time. And that's another reason why I felt very comfortable. But on the other side of it, the GSA is super critical to get back into the general fund. And I want to also remind our council, one of the biggest reasons is there are years that bowling doesn't come here and we pay it. And I, I think this is a great way to bring that money back into the general fund and also continue the economic vitality of downtown. We are grateful to have them. I think we took it for granted for a while. I love what Councilwoman Anderson, and I want to give this woman a huge shout. Brandy, you're amazing. This was a lot of her brainchild, so I want to give her a ton of kudos. And I love what she said, like, we need to step it up, let them know we appreciate them, we want to do everything we can. She's also kind of a marketing genius over here, so we're going to lean heavily on Brandy, but I definitely want to recognize you, Councilwoman Anderson, because phenomenal job. I just, you need to know. So. And you can work with Chad to embarrass him more, to do more. He's doing great, actually. He's doing great. We fought for a long time to get someone over there to really focus on that facility, and we finally have it. And I will say, just, I'm going to call the elephant out in the room, it's been a long fight for me over there at RSCVA. It has not been easy. Lots, Mike knows, Rick Murdoch knows. I have probably been more like a certain council member that is no longer here over there, is how they probably perceive me over there. I get scrappy, I get probably a little emotional, because I think the city of Reno, quite honestly, has taken on a lot of responsibility. But the partnership now has changed, and we're really, really grateful for that. But yeah, I have not been popular over there, just so you guys know. But things are changing, and we have new board members that understand the impact of economic vitality. So with that being said, I am going to make the motion to approve this, and the, I want to make sure, though, that this is attached to the GSA in perpetuity. So that would be my motion. So.
Second.
So I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. And all those opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, have a great day, you guys. We'll see you at the next board. I think, when will I see you next? Tomorrow? No.
December 11th.
Oh, that's right. Okay. December 11th. Bye, you guys. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, if you'd like, we could go.
Hand it over to Councilwoman Taylor.
Back to item B12, pulled by Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you so much, because I wanted Megan to be able to get back to work really quick. All this is, is a $21,000 grant to create, begin the creation of a citywide historic context report. And all I want. And all I wanted Megan to do was to explain what that is. I had to ask myself, she said that it does not, it's not the end, it's a beginning. And I just, it's, the reason I wanted to pull it is that, you know, there'll be subsequent items associated. Can you?
Yeah, sure. Good morning. Megan Burner, Arts and Culture Manager, for the record. Thanks for highlighting this item. This is a grant acceptance from the Nevada State Historic Preservation Office to start the first phase of a citywide historic context. There are nearly 30,000 properties in the city of Reno with a construction date before 1980, which means that some of them are potentially eligible for the local historic register or the national and state historic register. Only about 11% of these have been surveyed so far. And we've really taken a piecemeal approach to surveying our resources based on the modern layout of the city. And so this would actually look at the historical development of the city and prioritize based on that and allow us to really get a feel for what we have here. It would inform subsequent surveying and addition to those registers that I mentioned. Adding things to the national historic register does open up the possibility of historic tax credits and other funding for owners. So it's really, yeah, that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to mention, often, our relationship with SHPO is one where they're a regulator and we are being regulated. They're putting down conditions, we're having to prove that we comply with them and so on. To have them giving us funds to help us do our work is a very positive step in the relationship, and they've done it before. And I just, but not necessarily recently. And so I wanted to highlight that as well. And you said it's Phase One, but what, what are subsequent phases?
So this, this would be the initial research, probably pulling from previous surveys and histories of the city to develop some of that context. And then the second phase, which will hopefully happen in next fiscal year, would be to do actual ground-level surveys of some of those identified resources to create that bigger picture of the context, so we know where to really delve in deeper.
And then one more thing, who actually does the survey? Both either Phase One or Phase Two?
So we would be hiring a consultant for this. We have a few that we've worked with in the past that are sort of the larger, like, environmental consultants that have architectural historians on staff. So we would hire a consultant to work with.
And then the end game, is this to add buildings to either state, local, or national?
Exactly, yes. And to help us carry out some of those goals in our reimagine Reno master plan for historic preservation.
And does the state actually have, I know we have a local program, I know there's a national, but what, is there actually a state program?
There is a state register as well, which is really similar to the national register. It's an honorary, there's no regulatory requirements that come with placing properties on the state register, but they have to do more with significant events and architecture related to our state history.
Gotcha. All right, well, thank you. I don't know if there's any more questions from anyone. If not, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work, Megan, and that of Melissa. So important.
And yes, yes, I should acknowledge that Melissa Havy in our department did most of the research and writing for this grant, so.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we're going to move into a presentation from RTC. Welcome.
Mr. Thomas, always interesting to see you on that side of the dais.
Very glad to be here this afternoon.
Look at that tie. You know your audience, Mr. Thomas.
One place I can wear it without getting in trouble.
I know.
To start, well, good afternoon, council. I am very proud to be here today to give you a presentation. So I'm not asking for anything specific, but I wanted to update you on some activities of RTC that I think you'd be interested in. I will share that I've made the same presentation to the Board of County Commissioners and the Spark City Council. So it is my interest and certainly something that the RTC Board likes is for us to go out and lead each of the local governments to update you on what we've been doing. The subject that I want to talk about, the subjects I want to talk about today are the two recent studies that we completed. And then I'm going to ask Dale Keller, who's our deputy director, Deputy Executive Director and Director of Engineering, to talk to you about some of the bigger projects that are going on in the city of Reno currently and in the near future. So when I do these presentations, I always like to start again with a refresh of what the RTC Board is. I know all of you are interested, probably monthly, weekly, sometimes daily, on transportation and your words and what you hear from your constituents. So I wanted to share that the board that we have, made up of five council members, or five members across the local jurisdictions, is really a regional board. So our challenge at RTC is to be aware of all the local entities' concerns about transportation, but to translate that into a regional perspective. I would point out that something that's not commonly thought about is we've been around for quite a while. We were talking about seventies earlier today. We're a creature of the seventies at RTC. In fact, we're only two years younger than the airport authority, so we've been in existence for quite a while. And we really do, as a board, I think the board focuses on trying to be responsive to all the jurisdictions. But again, to address the fact that the average trip link in our community is a little more than six miles, which means most trips that people in our community take cross jurisdictions. And the transportation network really does function holistically and not really individually. Another thing I know that is frequent in terms of not only the community, but also you as elected officials, is how are decisions made? There's a common interest, I think, in dealing with transportation issues and turning to RTC to say, can you deal with this issue? And often, the frustration is how long it takes for us to respond. So I did want to reiterate the fact that we're a capital agency. We don't provide, other than our buses, we provide capital improvements. We do run a service, which is the public transportation system, but a lot of what people focus on with RTC is the capital side. So this is a chart that explains the decision-making process that has developed in part because of regulation, but also a good, healthy practice to make sure when we spend, in some cases, up to $100 million in the community, that we're spending it the right way. So just to refresh, the first bubble here, which is the regional transportation plan, so that's a holistic transportation plan for the whole region. And it's done to comply not only with the federal government's requirement for what we have to do as a community in order to spend federal funds, but it also is necessary because of the NRS legislation that requires in Washoe County, and this is unique, that we have a regional transportation plan. Essentially, that first RTP really is everything that anybody could possibly think of that might be needed in the next 20 years to deal with transportation issues. The second step here is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, which is commonly referred to in local governments, like capital improvement plans. So this is our five-year plan, where we take the projects out of the 20-year plan and instill them down to ones that are of the highest importance. And I will reiterate that we don't make decisions arbitrarily. We have a very established prioritization process with nine key factors that we weigh the projects against to make sure that we're doing the right thing when we're moving them forward. The orange bubble is the one where you, as a local government, have the first kind of direct interaction with us. And that is when we have those projects after the five-year plan, we're ready to move forward with them. We come to you for two reasons. One is RTC doesn't own anything. Everything we do is on the behest of the local government. So if there's a project in Reno, we have to get your authorization to do it. And then secondly, you would authorize us to use eminent domain, which is often needed in transportation projects to perfect those projects. So that's really the first touch of a formal action from the, from the city council. And then lastly, much like you, we have an annual operating budget, which is where we're actually spending the funds to do the projects in the community. The first study I wanted to bring to your attention is a maintenance study that we completed this year. The study was done with an outside consultant, NCE, on behalf of RTC, but it involved very heavily the interaction with the local government staffs, the engineering, the public works, the maintenance staffs of the three jurisdictions. And what we did was, we, we know there's an issue in maintenance and the ability for all agencies to fund it, but we wanted to get our arms around, like, what is the scope and nature of that? And when we're talking about maintenance, RTC traditionally and historically has been responsible for maintenance, as you see in this picture of the asphalt. So when you think about maintenance from RTC, what we do is we do on the regional road network, we make sure those roads that are regional in nature are maintained according to some prescribed standards. However, this study looked at everything. It looked at snow plowing, it looked at crack sealing, potholes, signs, striping, every, everything you could possibly think of as it related to the transportation network, not only at the regional level, but also at the local level. And the conclusion of that report is that, not surprisingly, we don't have, even though all of the jurisdictions are spending the funds that are allocated to them, we don't have enough money to keep up with the needs of the system holistically. And our conclusion out of the report was, in order to meet what we would desire as a region, in all the local governments, we'd need about $1.4 billion over the next 10 years. So with that staggering conclusion, we did look at what to do next or what some of the findings were. And I would, I would stress, this study was not intended to come up with a solution. It really was to get our arms around the magnitude of the problem, because there's been a lot of conversation, but it hadn't really been captured, like, what is the scale of this problem? So a couple of bullets, points of what the study said, not surprisingly, there's insufficient sun, funding holistically in the whole region to take care of the problems. And that as time goes on, the backlogs for projects that are not only needed but also wanted, it's going to be harder to meet those needs. And that there will be declining network conditions. And that is something that I'm sure all of you are concerned about, because we all drive these roads on a daily basis. So some of the recommendations out of this study were that prioritizing preventative maintenance is a key. And what that means really is, if you look at your limited dollar you have to spend, some portion of it needs one, which is the funding awareness. And when, that particular term, what we mean by it in this study is, we have a process we've been using for quite some years at the regional level, which is keep the good roads good. In other words, don't chase after roads that are already bad and put all your money into them, because the consequence is your list of bad roads is going to get bigger and bigger much faster than you'll be, ever be able to keep up with them. So the strategy is to really keep focused on things that are in good shape. How can we spend less money to keep those in good shape rather than chasing after the ones that maybe are already in a bad position? And the other two items, really, one of them self-evident, which is prioritization. And I would say, from the regional standpoint, we focus as a top priority is volume of traffic. So again, if you have a dollar to spend and everybody wants it, we start with, where are the roads that have the most traffic on them? Obviously, trying to focus on the most benefit to the community by those investments. And then a more recent endeavor we've taken on, which I'll talk about in a little more detail, is the intelligent transportation system. And the study did recommend that we spend money doing, or focusing on that. And the reason I would say that is because that's our best bet to somewhat reduce our need to invest in capacity improvement, if we can really fine-tune our intelligent transportation system so we're making the best use of the roads and the capacity in the roads that already exist. Second study that we undertook at the direction of our board was to look at this growing issue of revenue loss based on vehicles that are not, do not purchase fuel, EVs, hybrid vehicles. And we hired the, we engaged the GWIN, a study from the GWIN Center, because they are a nonpartisan group that really does focus on primarily legislative issues and policy issues. So we know that all paths eventually lead through the legislature in terms of getting funding or correcting some of our abilities to respond. And so we hired them to take a look at this question of what are the options to deal with the fact that we're not gaining the revenues from fuel tax from vehicles that don't pay fuel tax? So these two charts are a summary of some of the findings. The one on the left is the actual growth in, as you can see, hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles. So as of 2024, roughly about 5.5% of the fleet. In other words, all the vehicles that are on the road are either EV or hybrid. So, you know, in the big scheme of things, it's not huge now, but it's growing, you can see from this chart. And so every year, as that sector of the fleet grows, it's going to be a greater impact on not only us at the regional level, but also you, because you have fuel tax that you use to maintain your roads. The second one is probably more troubling, and that's the fact that the taxable gallons sold has been going down. You accompany that with the fact that the population's grown, I think, over 50,000 people in the last five years in our region, and the vehicle miles traveled is up in the millions in terms of people are driving more. There's more people and they're driving more, is the short of it. But at the same time, because their, their vehicles are getting much more efficient, the fleets are much more efficient, every time somebody drives, they're contributing less to maintain and build roads. So you can, you put those two together, and it does spell a funding challenge for us going forward on a transportation network that is funded by fuel tax. So the GWIN Center came forward with a couple of policy recommendations. The top ones are ones that would be, would require approval from the legislature, and the bottom ones are ones that could be done here locally. So I'll just touch on these briefly, and certainly if you have more questions, to the extent we can add details, we will. The first one is one that's been talked about for quite some time, and I would say that the last numbers I saw, 39 of the 50 states have already implemented it, which is a fee or a tax on electric vehicles and hybrids. So it's not a new problem, it's one that most other states have dealt with, we just haven't in Nevada dealt with. There's been a lot of discussion over the last few sessions, but no progress in, in providing for that revenue source for those types of vehicles. The other one is a more global strategy, which is really moving away, long-term from the issue of people consuming less fuel, is to move towards a, a fee structure that would charge people based on how much they're driving. So regardless of your type of vehicle, you would pay how much you drive. That's kind of the ideal in the transportation world, but it is also the most complex to do. Because not only do you have to get consent of the public, which has been the biggest pushback by having government know how much you're driving and potentially where you're driving, but also in collecting it. The beauty of the system right now is the wholesalers pay us the fuel tax. So when people fuel their car, their individual vehicles, the money's already been accounted for way upstream in a much easier way. But if you think about this, every single person's going to have to be accounted and tracked and then billed for it. So it's the ideal, but it's a very complex one that nobody's figured out. All the states have been talking about it, but nobody has perfected that. And then lastly is just a subset of it, which is electric charging stations. And this is really kind of an offshoot of when electric vehicles started to become prevalent. And that would again be, you know, just a part of it. There's a lot of complexities to that, not the least of which the charging stations are not set up to collect money in that way, in the same way the fuel pumps are, or the fuel stations are. So moving to the second category, which are things we can do already. The first one is the supplemental government services tax. So there is an ability for the Board of County Commissioners to impose that. It is in concept for transportation, but it's not in law required to be for transportation. But that could be something where, I believe, the number is up to 20 million a year could be generated if the Board of County Commissioners chose to do that. The second one is an increase of 1/8 of 1% of the sales tax. That is set up by law in our county to be voted on by the voter. So in other words, if the people of our community voted to do that, that would be an additional, where it is now, about 15 million a year, that could go to transportation. So those were the conclusions of what could be done, you know, foreseeable future to address this issue. And then lastly, before I hand it over to Dale, I wanted to talk about the intelligent transportation system, which I know we've explained to you, I think we've made presentations before. Simplest way to think about this is having a transportation network that is responsive to the needs at the moment. Right now, the way our traffic signal systems work, they're preset, they're based on some assumptions, and they don't really respond to special events. So this is a system, we've been working with your staff and the staffs of the other two local governments. two local governments, to see how can we make our system intelligent? And in short, what it means is, we have a common platform for the technology we use, we connect our signals with fiber, we have a centralized location where we have a group of people that are working on how to move people at a point in time, and be much more efficient about how we move people around our community. So we have been advancing that, and we're not, we haven't perfected it yet, but we have done some things to move this forward. One of them is, and I'll move on to the traffic center in just a second, but we have, in Sparks, we implemented an intelligent corridor on the Pyramid Sparks Boulevard area. And that's been very successful by interconnecting a series of signals and making them smart to make sure that we can get more capacity, and it's very, very successful at doing that in that corridor. We're now moving on to the city of Reno to do something similar, which is, we're going to be looking at Virginia Street up by the university, to test the idea that we can use this system to deal with special events. In other words, a football game, or a basketball game, or some event where there's a large influx of people that we all have to scramble and dealing with. So we're going to look at that, making those kind of technological improvements in that corridor, to see if that can provide us some benefit. So a couple of upcoming issues before I, I guess I lied, I'm not ready to hand it over to Dale yet, but some things I wanted to let you know about is, we are very aggressively pursuing this concept of having an EV fee, hybrid, hydrogen, I'm sorry, hybrid fuel fee. And so you'll be hearing likely in the near future from RTC about efforts to see if we can get a fee like that imposed in Washoe County. And the reason we're choosing that, to go down that way and explore it, is because so far, it hasn't really been successful at a state level, and we feel that the time is right to deal with this. You know, and simplistically, to think about it, there's 5% of the fleet now, as it gets bigger and bigger, it's going to be harder and harder to change the nature of how we collect revenue. So that's something you'll be hearing about in, in the near future. The other thing at the national level, I think we all know that things are changing there. We do know that the Surface Transportation Act is coming up for renewal, and that the funding that was provided with the IIJA ends in '26. And so all bets are off, and there's a lot of uncertainty of where the federal government's going to go in terms of transportation. We do know, at least from statements that have been given from the power, the depart, or the, I'm sorry, party that's in charge, that they won't be funding bikes and art and some of the other things that the past administrations did. So there really sounds like going to be focusing on bridges and capacity improvements. We will be watching that, and of course, we will be sharing with you how we'll be making sure we bring those revenues into our community. We're very aggressive in watching the federal government's direction when they say there's money available, and we've been very successful working with NDOT to bring money into our community by targeting our projects based on what we are understanding at the federal level, they want to see their money spent at, or spent on. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dale, because I know he's got some projects that you all will probably be interested in understanding their status.
Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, Dale Keller, Deputy Executive Director and Director of Engineering at the RTC. So I just want to highlight four projects that are highly visible right now with inside the city of Reno. Later, after the new year, I'll be back at City Council to present the fiscal year 2027 Street and Highway Program for potential adoption. At that time, we'll have a more robust update about the Street and Highway Program overall, and where we've been, the work we've been doing here in 2026 and into 2027. So the four projects, the first one on the top is Arlington Avenue Bridges Reconstruction Projects. We're well underway, we're looking to wrap up that second bridge and get that out of the water here by early December, so we're continuing to progress that and stay on schedule. If any council members or mayor would like to have a tour, more than welcome to have a tour, some really cool things going on, very generational project here for the Arlington Avenue Bridges, so we continue to remain on track. The second project that will start, begin next year, is the biggest little bike network project, which is a very transmoral project in downtown Reno, we're looking for different corridors to help improve bike, excuse me, bicyclist mobility as well as safety. We're actually touching over 45 different intersections, so that project is on track, began in the summer of 2026, roughly about $17 million investment. Another project that just kicked off in downtown is the West Forest Street Safety Project, as well as the Downtown Project, started here this month. That's over about $35.5 million project, which actually kicks off all the way from West McCarran all the way into downtown Reno. So we're excited to kick off that project to both help with safety and mobility for West Forest Street. And the last highly visible project in South Reno is the Veterans Roundabout Modifications Project. We are looking to wrap that project up around Thanksgiving and have a ribbon cutting sometime in early December. So that's been a very successful project. We appreciate everybody's patience overall from this summer from our construction projects, and we're looking to open that roundabout back up into its new full capacity by the end of this month. So I'd like to turn it back over to Bill, and we'll happy to answer any questions.
I would say we have about 65 projects in various stages of activity right now, so this is just a short list of what we've got going on. But I, and last thing, I guess I would want to say is, we work very closely with Carrie and the city of Reno staff. I'm pretty sure Dale and Carrie probably talk three or four times a week. But it's very important to us to have that engagement with the local staffs, because they know, not only hearing from you, but also the issues that they hear in their jurisdictions, it really helps us plan and perform better. So both Dale and I are available if you have questions.
Awesome, okay. Bill, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you guys over there, because I do feel like it's a different day when it comes to micro mobility and the plans that we have coming along the Truckee River, and just, there's just a lot of different dynamics, I think, and it's, you can see the difference. So thank you so much. I also think it really helps with your background and knowledge of the city and how, you know, you really, Bill led the revitalization of downtown in a big way with the university. Had it not been for you, we, it would not look like the way it does today. And remember, it was very unpopular, and today, people's like, oh my God, I haven't been to the university area in so long, and look at the beautiful streets and how it was designed, and Bill should take all the credit, because it was his vision that really got us there. And it's really been transformative over there and made such a difference. So thank you so much. And also, I want to point out that the landscape, that's the other thing that I noticed being on RTC, the landscape is very, very different under this administration when it comes to these federal funds, and, and so it is a little more challenging, and we don't have the support that we have typically had. So we're just trying to, trying to work through those things. So it just, it's good and bad, right? Like, it's, so anyway, I just want to acknowledge the job you guys are doing over there, and always working with Carrie has made a big difference too, because she has to put up with us over here where we complain, 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 you know, and she has to put up with that. So, so we apologize, Carrie, but she's, she's amazing, and so you guys are doing a phenomenal job. You always answer the phone whenever I call, even though I might not always be happy. You always, you know, talk me through it, and the accessibility has been fantastic. But I really am proud of what you've done over there and how, how well you lead the board, so, good job. I don't get to tell you often, anyway. Okay, I want to start with you, Councilwoman Anderson.
Yes, hi, thank you for the update. I was interested in learning a little bit more about the intelligent traffic management. I've been thinking just about all the exciting things that we have coming to northern Nevada with the stadium, not only, you know, at the GSR, but also all of the music that is going to be downtown, not only on Fourth Street, but also down with the Globe Plaza and the festival, and then potentially soccer out in South Reno. And so that, that makes me more interested in learning about how we can be prepared for those events and the, you know, the growing pains that those traffic patterns are going to cause.
There's a lot of opportunity, but I'll let Dale, who definitely is deep into the details, give you some background.
Councilwoman Anderson, that's a great question, and those are great opportunities. We're going to look to help address with this Traffic Management Center. So I'd say right now, our system, it is smart, we have a lot of different communications, we can talk to all of our signals. And the city of Reno staffed does a great job managing and making sure we can make adjustments. But what we're looking to do is actually, instead of being reactive, actually be proactive to address a lot of these special events that we know is going to happen, and we can actually do that in real time. So as we start looking into be more of a smart and bigger city with these different types of events, special events, weather conditions, you name it, crashes, how can we adjust and give the most capacity out of the roadways that we can? And so that's what we're going to look be doing, and how can we do that with less staff and more intelligent, more technology aspect of that as well? And as Bill mentioned, we're looking to do a pilot project here on Virginia Street and North McCarron. So when we have basketball this, this winter, how can we get traffic in and out of that event more efficiently?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bill and Dale, for being here and providing this information. I think the most important question that I have is, where did you get that tie, and where can I get one?
No.
I'm just kidding, it's a great tie, though. I really like it. And I appreciate all the, all the context that you provided, the study that you have through the GWIN Center and the recommendations that they are providing. Hopefully, all legislators are looking at ways to help us fund and figure out those, those gaps that are, that are occurring with the needs for our roads to continue to be maintained and improved while seeing a bigger load from vehicles that are becoming more efficient, or may not be contributing because of their electronic use instead of gasoline powered. So I think I've had multiple opportunities to meet with you and some of your staff to get to know more of what's happening in RTC. And one of the times that we met, you gave me a map that showed how RTC sort of broke down our region, I believe it was seven or nine different sections. I'm just wondering if you can sort of give more information on that here about how you're looking at the interconnectedness of our city and how folks travel maybe from the neighborhood to work and experience different parts of our region?
Sure, so where we start when we do our transportation planning is, we have a model that basically, is based on the regional plan, which tells us where people are going to be building, where people live, where they work, and we translate that into a model that tells us where people should be traveling based on that model. But we also do checking with each of our projects to do some traffic counts. So for example, if we're doing something, you know, in, I'll just say McCarron Boulevard area, before we go out and do our projects, we, we definitely look at the traffic patterns and try to figure out, you know, not only where are people driving today, but also where are they going to be in the future? So it is, it is very much a in-depth analysis we do with each and every one of our projects. But we also listen to people. We do community meetings, you know, to try to understand what people's particular issues are. So I certainly, Dale could go deeper into exactly what he does, because he handles the engineering, but it is very comprehensive the way we make decisions on which projects move forward. And I would say that, the other thing is, we're not, once we start on a project, doesn't mean that that project is finite. We want to, as we move forward on these expensive projects, make sure we hit the mark on what, you know, the community, the council, the people who drive on these roads really are experiencing, and how we can make things better.
I found, it's a neighborhood network plan that I was referring to.
Oh, that one, okay.
Really appreciative, yeah, of, of the work that's going on there. Wanted to thank Carrie and Public Works Team for not just looking at the growth, but making safety features. I know we've had a lot of conversations about the intersections of Miraloma and McCarron, and South McCarron, near Meadowwood Mall, and some of the concerns that we're hearing there. So just thank you for being so attentive to the issues in Ward 3. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you so much for being here. Transportation is near and dear to my heart for obvious reasons, but also because without the infrastructure, we can't really do anything around it. We know that it's the first thing that happens in our communities where we start getting another investment revitalization. I have a couple of specific questions for you, and I'll just run through them. The first thing is, I wanted to confirm under the key findings. When we talk about potential additional funding, the city of Reno has no jurisdiction in any of this, is that accurate? We cannot help with raising GST or authorizing any of that? That's all a different jurisdiction through the legislature or the county commissioners?
Yeah, all of our funding flows through the Board of County Commissioners, so ultimately, they decide for RTC what money we have.
Yeah, so we don't have any authority to do that, the city of Reno. We went to DC a while back, and we had talked about getting some money, I think it was about $6 million for some of our local roads. So I was wondering if you might be able to give an update on that? I know things have been a little bit iffy in that, in that arena. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the future of rail, if that's possible. And then we also have, I think, after Arlington Avenue Bridges downtown, we have Sierra Street and Keystone coming up too. So I think those are really important projects, if it's still the, if we're still planning on working, working in that sequence of bridges. And then the last thing is, I have to ask about the UNR Pedestrian Bridge and the hopes and dreams of that project. Thank you.
Well, I will start with the last one, and if I can remember, get to the first one. So we are actually, we've hired a consultant to look at the student crossings of Interstate 80. And specifically, we've asked them to look like, at what would be the best solution, not only practically, but aesthetically, for students, as we know, who are now on the south side of the freeway, to get over to the campus on the north side. We've, we hired a firm, not only with RTC funding, but the city of Reno contributed as well as the university. That consultant's coming to town, I think, either this month or early next month to do the first walkthrough and actually take a look at it. We're hoping by the end of the year to have some concepts that we certainly will be sharing with the city of Reno that could lay out a better way to move people, move students.
And when we talked before, I just want to set the expectation that that would be additional grant funding that we would look at for something like that, is that accurate?
Right, yes, if it's not funded, so we'd have to come up with the funding. We're thinking that it would fit within one of the pedestrian-oriented funding buckets that the federal government might provide. Or one of the funding sources that we are limited by law to use federal money towards pedestrians and bicyclists. There still are certain programs that that money has to go to that. So that was, that's where we'll be starting, but yes, it has to be funded.
Do you know the status on the, the money that we went to go try and get, the $6 million for local roads?
Yes, I do. So Congressman Amade did approve that funding request, and just to share with the rest of the council, it's $6 million that would be split amongst the local jurisdictions to do maintenance. So it's the first time we've really gone after local street maintenance money, and so far, so good. We got past the main hurdle, which is having one of our congressmembers put it into the earmarked proposal. Now the question is, and we're watching day by day with the government opening back up, will that money be part of these funding efforts? So fingers crossed, it's going forward, it's now just a question of whether holistically the federal, the Congress decides to keep earmarked funds for transportation.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, I'll wait until my second round for the other follow-up questions. Thanks, Bill.
Councilwoman Doer?
Thank you so much, Bill, for being here, Dale, great update. I just have a few follow-up questions. One is, first on your point about the revenues and what you're looking at, what, what I'm surprised at is, I think it's well established that because of the hybrid vehicles and the e-vehicles, you know, there's a segment of the population that's not paying to drive on the road. So what, what is the hangup here? Why, what, you mentioned the legislature, but I'm not sure, so this is a legislative required change in ordinance, or could you explain that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe, at least the analysis we've done, there's any local authority, either the Board of County Commissioners or the city councils to impose this fee. So no matter how we do it, it's going to have to be approved by the legislature.
Okay, have we asked, have we sent in a bill request, have, anything?
We've asked, in both of the past two sessions, we've lobbied, nobody's submitted a bill.
That's my question.
And part of that was because there was a statewide effort led by NDOT to put something together, but what we're talking about now is doing it our, going our own.
Okay, so let's go at our own. I certainly would sign on or show up to testify, you know, as much as I support all the alternate fueled vehicles, they still have to pay for their share of the use of the roads. I mean, they're having an impact. And what I was wondering is, you had a footnote in your, in your slide, don't know what number it is, but it says, NDOT estimates an increase to about 22%, I'm not sure of what, by 2035, for the combined share of these alternate funded vehicles. It's a footnote on your slide that shows on our slide. But do you know what the current share is?
The last best numbers we have, it's 5.5%.
5.5. So even if we had that whole 5.5, I'm just wondering how big of a shortfall that would cover, do you think?
You mean dollar-wise?
Yeah, like, would we be made whole? I kind of doubt it, but... Yeah, like, would we be made whole? I kind of doubt it, but, you know.
So we make, we get about roughly $100 million a year in fuel tax.
From fuel tax?
Yes.
Okay. And what is that percent of your budget, do you know, for?
Like 47%, I think.
About half. About half of your budget comes from fuel tax?
Yes.
Okay, and so this 5% might, oh my, this 5% might be 10%. So it might be another $10 million or something.
It's roughly today about 5.5 million.
5.5 million.
But the point is, you know, it only gets worse over time.
Yes. I kind of seem to be out of time. But my other question was, on the GST, I mean, I'm not sure. I know that the county commission debated it. I think we have a 1% still remaining that's unexercised on GST. Have you talked to them about that?
Um, yes.
Okay. Not interested, or?
Well, no, I think there's interest. There's a conversation, I'm aware of, that's going on at the Board of County Commissioners. My take on it is, I think they all see the importance. The question is the alignment.
You mean, what to use it for?
No, it's really, there's conversations about how to use it, but there's also the issue of whether there's desire to do that.
I understand. Look, I've been around a long time. I have seen the Board of County Commissioners debate the use of the 1% GST going back, I'm going to say, over almost 20 years. I've seen it come up numerous times. So I'm not surprised that the current BCC doesn't seem to have an interest, but maybe that's not forever. I mean, maybe it could be reintroduced. I have a second question, which I'll wait to the second round on, just to prepare for Dale on the Biggest Little Bike Network and the Roundabout, so, thank you.
Okay. I just noticed, your dad is here, Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, he snuck in a little bit ago.
Hi.
Hey.
How are you? Take-your-dad-to-work day, right?
Yeah.
I love it. Nice to see you, Commissioner Clark. I couldn't see you past Bill, and then I leaned over and I said, "I know him." All right, go ahead. Take it away, Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo what Councilmember Doer said and just highlight the necessity to figure out a way to include the EV vehicles in, you know, a way to help pay for the roads. They're all over the place. Tesla's here. Like, it just makes sense to have them contribute. But also, I'm interested in finding out if we could do anything with the distribution centers here. We have so many distribution centers here with trucks coming and going constantly. And I'm acutely aware of that because the big rigs just crumble our roads up in the North Valleys and because of the warehouses that have been put in neighborhoods and other weird planning things that have happened and been approved before my time and after my time. We have a lot of damage that's, you know, on this long list of RTC roads. It's one of these roads that we don't have the funds to get to in a timely manner. So I'd like to find out if, you know, if we pursue anything at the state level, legislative level, if we can find out if there's anything we can do for these logistical centers that come here, these mega warehouses that have trucks coming and going constantly. And I don't know if any of them are using EV trucks. I know that those exist, but I don't know if they're being used. And, you know, we have to show our mileage when we are in store cars and things like that. So it's not like this is some unknown thing that we can't figure out how much mileage people are driving. And granted, we don't know if they drive up to another state, but they still have to drive across Nevada to get there, right? So I think we really need to figure out a way to lobby, or RTC does, and we could support you, to figure out a way to make sure everybody's helping to pay for roads. Because we have some of the highest gas tax in the state, right, if not the highest? And we still don't have enough money? And what are we, like, the second highest populated county in the state also? And we don't have enough money for these roads? Like, this is kind of ridiculous. We really have to, like, prioritize this. And this is not on you. This is just to express the urgency of needing to figure this out. Because we've kind of maxed out what I think people are willing to do with regard to paying additional fees on gas or anything like that. I know people would absolutely not be interested in paying an additional fee for registration. If that came for a vote, I think that would not pass or fly at all. So I think it's time to go after people that are using the roads and not currently paying anything for it. So just want to kind of echo that. And, yeah, that's it. Oh, also, one more thing. I do have some areas where we've had multiple fatalities in kind of short periods of time. Is that something that can help maybe move some improvements up the list? Because there's a stretch of road on Military that's going to happen hopefully next year. But we had three fatalities there in a span of 12 months, which is like crazy considering, you know, we're the rural, we're more spaced out and everything. So what do we do? What process can we follow if we have an area where it's like people are dying regularly, pedestrians are being hit? What can we do to be a little more nimble and address those areas that are, you know, of higher concern, that are more dangerous for people?
So in answer to that question, the first thing I'd say is, safety is a big part of how we prioritize the projects. And what we do, in the last few years, we created a metric, which we call our high injury network count. And so when we evaluate which projects move forward, that's one of the first things we look at. So yes, accidents and deaths and crashes are part of what we use to decide which roads get attention. The other thing is that, you know, a lot, the part that's always kind of not mentioned, but is one that I think is one that needs to be dealt with, is driver behavior. And it's been very tough. Hopefully, that's going to change to get speed cameras or get any kind of tool that would actually change the behavior of the drivers. Because we spend our time and energy designing the roads to make them safe. But we do our best, but we don't control the behavior of the drivers on the road. So short answer is, it's a very important part of it. Long answer is, we have more work to do to make sure the roads are safer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I did have a couple more things, but my time's up.
Okay, I'll get you on round two. Okay, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Thomas, thank you so much. And I wanted to go last because I have the benefit of seeing you quite frequently. Madam Mayor and I serve on the RTC, so some of the things are not new to us. But I want to say a couple of things. One is, I think you made a mistake in your comments earlier where you said that you thought that Dale and Ms. Kosky spoke four times a week. I think they speak four times an hour. I really truly do believe that. I think what I have seen in the responsiveness of the various agencies is that RTC believes itself to be the sort of the center of the wheel, and then the agency's sparks, the county and the city are the spokes of it. And I really do appreciate the collaboration with all the agencies. Because when we sit over there, yes, we are certainly advocating for the city of Reno, but we were also advocating for our region because regionally, we are connected and the transportation infrastructure weighs so much more. And so our team, I think, are knit together, and it has proved adept, which also answers one of Ms. Ebert's good questions about safety improvements, in particular, being sort of able to pivot. And I think the difficulty comes is that it's hard. When the larger the project is, the harder it is to pivot, right? If we were just talking about, like, putting up a stop sign, your teams have pivoted very quickly for that. But when they are major projects, and that slide you put at the beginning really speaks to that, I do think that when a council member has a concern about a specific place, we have to be responsive to those things. I think in the North Valleys, we've been particularly. I worked with your team the last several weeks on a stretch of Military that had not had proper striping for when a roadway improvement project happened.
A bike lane?
The bike lane did not get re-put into that area. For whatever reason, I don't know why, but they've gone back out and done that. We're working on the pork chop at Military as well after some constituent concerns were raised over at RTC. And so there are ways to be nimble, and I think we're trying to do that. What is the investment in RTC's dollars in the last, I don't know, let's say, five years in the North Valleys? Do you have an estimate of that, or could Mr. Keller tell us about that? I think it's in the magnitude of hundreds of millions of dollars, in part because it's the area that needs the most advanced planning. And I'm not talking about NDOT's work, although we have had to participate fully in those projects as well. But that number must be approaching near $600 million or $700 million the last time I checked. So it's, I think, an important part of the component. Mr. Martinez spoke about neighborhood by neighborhood. I know that Madam Mayor and I have really thought very critically about the North Valleys, about Sun Valley. That's the next step in one of the big projects that will be announced. So there's a lot going on there. Let me also talk about EV tax, so that, and I'm sorry, Ms. Doer stepped away, and I might have to catch up with her. But those conversations are ongoing, of course, with the legislature. And my hope is that in the next legislative cycle that that will be addressed. If not, what we have discussed as a board at the board level is a voter-initiated referendum question or a voter override, so that we would have an opportunity to vote on it as a community, which I think will overwhelmingly be approved. I drive, at least one of my vehicles in my home is an EV vehicle, and so I understand the unfairness of not paying into the system. I think that's very important. And then the last thing I'll ask about, and you can come back to this on the second time around. Vice Mayor Taylor talked about the bridges projects, and you've identified the Arlington Bridges project. But I want to know specifically about the Whitewater Park elements that were underneath the bridge and some ingress and egress issues that have been left unresolved, because we have some folks who have been continually asking about those. I think, is it Charles Albright, Madam Mayor, that is asking about those? The Angler community just wants to know about what's happening with that.
Well, let Dale get into that in a little more detail than I'm comfortable talking about.
Understand.
Councilman Reese, good questions. I'll follow up with my team about the concerns about the Whitewater Park. I know we made some really very good improvements and working very closely with Whitewater Park about Arlington Bridges and some of the mitigations with the changing of our pier locations. And what I've seen out there is kayakers using and enjoying the new facility. Regarding ingress and egress, I know with the Sierra Street Bridge that we have upcoming in a 2027 construction time period, which is fully funded, ready to go, we are discussing and working with the city what the best access, both for maintenance-wise and the ingress and egress. So I think we have some really good solutions in there. We can follow up with Mr. Albright. And then for Vice Mayor Taylor-wise, then the third project that we have for bridge-wise is the Keystone Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. We have that fully funded for design, but we are still looking for funding for construction. We're looking at future formulaic funds for bridge funds upcoming. And then also, if there's discretionary grant opportunities for bridges, we'll be pursuing those.
Mr. Keller, just know, of course, as Madam Mayor and I have said before, if we had a great Whitewater Park and we are restoring it, let's just make sure that whatever improvements we can make to it about getting in and out of the river, that we don't make it harder for people who wanted to use that great facility. I know Vice Mayor Taylor has also advocated for this as well. We just need to make sure that we don't, in the run-up to design, sometimes what happens, we get to the 90% design and we've left something out, but you've been able to fix it in the last 10%. I just want to make sure that that's not being omitted.
Councilman Reese, if you don't mind, I just wanted to let you know, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but the other night, I saw people surfing on the new improvement there on the north side of the bridge, and they had their music, and it was really quite fun to watch, so.
I better see you out there surfing.
Yes, 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 you will. Backflips.
All right. Councilwoman Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, I would imagine that I've got comments for Dale or questions. But I just wanted to talk about some of the improvements and some of the projects that are in Ward 6 right now. First of all, now we're about, what's, a year out after the Steamboat and Double R project. That improvement has really changed people's lives in that area. I'm really looking forward to in about a year being able to pull the data for accidents and things there. It seems to me that the quality of life and just the way that people are moving through that corridor has been vastly improved. So thank you for the work there. And I know it took a lot of frustration and patience altogether, but it was well worth the investment. So the same thing with the Roundabout at Veterans and Geiger. It's been an interesting project where it just seems like the challenges have just been flare-ups, and it's been timing of people being able to come down Mount Rose when we've had, you know, big truck activity during the days there. But I just want to commend your team and the planning and the foresight on that project. It's very clear how well it's going to improve travel through there. But I'm actually really, really excited to see how the pedestrian safety improvements are going to work. I see all the lighting going in. The electricians were out there today. It feels already, before I've even seen the lighting start working, that pedestrians will feel much more, you know, much more visible, and they will be taken more seriously by the vehicles going through that area. So thank you for your vision there. One question, and I've gotten this from three, or I've received this question from three different people that are road bikers. And the bike lane, is it true that the bike lane bikers are supposed to go down the center of the Roundabout if they're traveling through that area?
Great question. The answer is no.
Okay.
So we have these on-ramps and off-ramps for bikes. And so we are promoting the interaction with bikes and peds more than bikes and traffic. So you'll see as you're driving into the Roundabout, there's a little ramp that you can come up, and you're on the same wider sidewalk with the pedestrians. We're asking them to use the same type of marked crossings as you see that. So very much as you're biking through a crosswalk, we're asking you to dismount, typically dismount and walk through. Now, if you feel you're an avid bike rider and you're in the spandex and you feel you can go with the flow of traffic, then they can do that. But what we're asking a cyclist to do is get out, mount, and walk your bike across the crosswalk.
Okay. Can I ask your team and our comms team to create some type of a public service announcement once we do the ribbon cutting on this and provide some kind of video about the best way to get through that for bikes and for pedestrians? I know it sounds a little bit corny, but being able to let the community know how we intend for them to use it, how it was designed specifically will be helpful. Because I, I can hear it already. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I don't see any lights on other than, oh, I can't see over your papers. Okay, Councilwoman Doer, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Ebert.
All right. Real quickly, well, I'll just lead with this. I, too, was so happy, having been the representative for 10 years down South Reno, to see Steamboat come to a conclusion, the Steamboat and Double R. Unfortunately, somehow I missed the ribbon cutting. And I would love, but I was also a similar advocate for this Roundabout, and I'm so happy with the progress. I would love to be invited or participate in that ribbon cutting. Both of those projects have been critical to how traffic moves in South Reno. So I just, kudos. Thank you for getting it done. On the Roundabout, are you still planning to put the cut over from Toll Road over to South Virginia? That, a whole separate project?
Councilwoman Doer, correct. Yes, that is a project that we are currently under preliminary design. We're looking through the feasibility analysis of that.
To actually remove the traffic off the Roundabout, if you happen to be headed to?
To Geiger, up to Virginia City.
Right?
Yep. So we're looking into working with city staff to find the best solution.
Well, you could enter that way or exit off Toll Road, right? I think it's off Toll Road.
Correct.
Maybe I don't have it.
Correct, yep. By Toll Road, by equestrian there, it would take that traffic and not go through the existing Roundabout.
Okay. And so let me know when the ribbon cutting is, and I'd love to be there. I'm thrilled with it. And the second thing is, I'm really not sure what this Biggest Little Bike Network is and where it is. I feel really out of the loop on that project. But before I go there, I wanted to ask you something about Arlington. So I don't think we've mentioned it here today, but the issues that the co-op is having. And I have heard that RTC cannot, you know, help any small business in particular. But what I am wondering is, it seems to be mostly one of how to navigate these closures. And I wonder if there just could be additional signage, you know? Whatever business is down that street, you know, the co-op's not right on Arlington. They're off, I think they're on Court and something. But there's probably other businesses in there, too. And I'm just wondering if we could have some of these signs that say, like, an arrow, you know, this way to co-op, and this, and this, maybe three businesses. This is different than professional office buildings because they got to find their way there, right? I mean, they're going there, they got to find their way there. But going to any of these retail operations is pretty optional. So that's why I'm just suggesting something out of the box, which may be not direct assistance to a business, but help them. Because I went through this whole thing with Midtown, right? And so did Dale, and so did others. And so many businesses were impacted. And you guys worked really hard to bridge construction so people had something to walk over to get to the business, you know? And that's a place where the business was right on the road. This is, at least, their setback, you know? So could you consider something like that? And the second thing, getting back to it, was just can you explain this Biggest Little Bike Network and how we can either be involved or see maps or understand it better?
We voted and approved it here.
Yeah, we voted, but what I'm Yeah, we voted, but what I'm saying is, I've still heard there's some debate about it, whether it's like striped, unstriped, green, are the lanes separated by stanchions? What, you know, what are some details? That's what I'm looking for.
I'll let Dale get into the details. I would, though, say just to remember what we're doing here, this is a new way of addressing bicycle movement in our community. And it's, instead of doing corridors, which is traditionally what we did, somebody would say, a road. Fix this road, right? But it didn't really address the movement of people around. This is the first time we've really done a network.
Right.
And the idea is to connect multiple bike paths together so people can move around safely. So that's the genesis of it. It's a big project, it's $20 million.
Wow.
And Dale can explain what we're going to do, because we'll be using, it's coming off the pilot project, which you may remember.
I do.
Where we actually tried multiple things downtown.
100% remember all of that, but I didn't know where we landed. Like, I know we voted on it, but I really don't know. And look, if we don't have the time to get into it all today, I mean, a separate thing would be fine.
I wonder if we could do a separate meeting? Is that something that we can work on?
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do an individual briefing with Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, I would love that.
It's a great map.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, so thank you.
Councilman Reese. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Ebert.
I know you can't see past my stuff here, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you for everything, and RTC has done a great job of coming out to my ward regularly and talking with the community about what projects are happening and what's upcoming and taking feedback. I did also want to share that there are some concerns with the Lemon Drive redesign or improvements with building up a berm through the Swan Lake area, what it will do environmentally. I know we've had some engagement from representatives from the Audubon Society. Also, there's been a lot of engagement from the community. I know I took a tour out there with the Lieutenant Governor and the Ira Hansen, Alexis Hansen, just kind of look out there and see what's going on and how we could maybe redesign to avoid the lake altogether, considering we had such a disastrous flood out there in 2017 that lasted for so long. I think that there's a lot of concern from the community regarding that in particular, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing all the due diligence on that. But also, quick, because I don't have a ton of time, Military Road, I went back and looked at my email, and I sent an email to Mayor Sheevy and Councilmember Reese in August of 2023, asking for help on Military Road because there had been actually four fatalities on that stretch of road. There was one vehicle, two pedestrians, and a motorcycle. The vehicle, actually, I believe the gentleman whose house it was behind is here today. There is a memorial. He has significant problems with people coming and setting up memorials and congregating there. I happened to see it last week. There were several vehicles parked there. There is an open, like, trench along the road there. He and I have requested frequently some type of barrier along that stretch of road so that that doesn't happen again, where somebody doesn't go into that ditch. We've had a lot of kind of back and forth on that, or, you know, it's City of Reno Land or it's RTC Road or whatever, but we're living with the reality of this road is unsafe, and we really need to have kind of collaboration with RTC and City of Reno to come up with a solution to keep people safe, not just the drivers, but also this gentleman and his property and his home. And, you know, fortunately, he didn't go through his fence and cause any other damage. Unfortunately, somebody lost their life. Now we have other people congregating there, but if they get hit by a car because people do speed on that road, we are going to get traffic signals, which hopefully will help. But there's things that have been going on here. I have been submitting Reno Direct tickets for this area for years. We have gotten the area restriped. That pork chop on Military Road, people have been ignoring it and making left turns over it or around it since housing development went in. You know, it's, I appreciate that things are happening now, but this has been a known problem for years, since before I got in office. I've been complaining about these things since before I got elected in 2022. So I just really want to stress that we need help with collaboration out there. And also, another thing I want to point out with the...
Councilmember Reese, do you mind if they can, can they respond to a couple of your questions?
Okay, just one thing, real quick, it's not a question, it's a statement. The fatalities out there, I know that we had to do some research to find out from different agencies how many there was, so I don't know if that's also a problem, where, you know, you have to ask police for the Washoe County Sheriff and then other agencies. I don't know that there's necessarily one database that has all that information at once. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wanted to also follow up on an earlier comment that Ms. Anderson made about rail. And so I know that that is an important topic that's of conversation because it impacts the corridor of downtown Reno and out to the Tahoe Regional Industrial Center. And so for my colleagues' benefit, of course, that conversation going on largely with UP. UP holds all the keys to that discussion because they have significant role to play in whether or not they would allow their rail line to be used if we could put cars, railroad cars on it. And the question is, is whether we would have to improve to build a second line. So those conversations are happening with our state and federal delegation partners as well as with UP. And then that also is related to the roadway construction potential possibility that would take a road out of the Tahoe Regional Industrial Center and then come back through essentially the Spanish Springs and then drop into those valleys there. And so those are conversations that are happening. It's a unique thing to be involved in because that would involve Story County, Endot, the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and so lots of partners that are there, but very positive conversations are happening in that area. We know that the folks who live here and work out in the Tahoe Regional Industrial Center are impacted, you know, greatly by the traffic conditions there that they're experiencing. We didn't bring Tesla here, but we certainly deal with the impacts of Tesla being here. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with my colleagues.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We need to take an hour break, and we'll be back at around 2 o'clock.
As we move into the next budget year, we're excited to share some of the key accomplishments this past year in the biggest little city.
Whether working to ensure a safe and welcoming community, planning for responsible growth, or maintaining strong fiscal accountability to our residents, our team is dedicated to building a community that people are proud to call home.
Running a city is no small feat. It takes seven dedicated council members and over 1,700 committed employees to make this city thrive. While you see some of them every day, many are behind the scenes.
But we all have one thing in common: We make Reno more than just livable. We make it livable!
Ensuring the infrastructure in our community stands the test of time, is critical to obtaining a vibrant and resilient city.
The utility services team oversees stormwater, wastewater, and recycled water throughout the city, including the sanitary sewer system. I know sewer is one of those things that people don't often talk about, but sewer systems play a crucial role in protecting public health and our environment. One important element in the sanitary sewer system is lift stations, which are needed in low-lying areas to pump sewage up to a gravity sewer line. All of our sewer lines convey sewage and ultimately end up at our wastewater treatment facilities. Over the last five years, our team evaluated 27 public lift stations in our community and determined that some needed major rehabilitation. Since the evaluation, the city has successfully rehabilitated five lift stations and completed the design improvements for their seven remaining stations in need of rehabilitation. These remaining lift stations will be constructed in the next two years to ensure the sustainability of the systems for years to come.
Since 1995, City of Reno Council has made street maintenance and rehabilitation a major priority. The Public Works Team maintains a pavement management system to evaluate the condition and serviceable life of over 755 miles of streets. This system allows us to plan for preventative maintenance and major rehabilitation projects based on priority.
Maintaining infrastructure, such as roads, is the job of the Maintenance and Operations Team. This last year, the Streets Division maintained 755 miles of paved roads. That includes 37,000 miles of road being plowed, over 6,000 potholes repaired, and over $12 million square feet of cracks sealed or filled. Our teams work around the clock when needed to ensure that residents can get where they need to go safely, rain, snow, or shine.
At the City of Reno, in our Sewer and Storm Drain Division, there's 50 of us that take care of just over 800 miles of sanitary sewer. That includes 35 lift stations. Our Sewer and Storm Drain Division in the City of Reno ensures safe maintenance for over 600 miles of stormwater lines. It's our aggressive preventative maintenance program that ensures that your system will respond properly to prevent overflows and flooding, keeping our residents and our environment safe and sound.
The Fleet Management Team maintains over 850 pieces of equipment, including police cars and other emergency response equipment. This year, the Fleet Management Team was ranked in the top 100 best fleets in the Americas, and doing work in-house saves the city millions of dollars each and every year.
And our final areas of responsibility is facility maintenance. We perform a wide variety of repairs and remodels and preventative maintenance on over 200 city-owned buildings. And just this last year, we completed a seismic retrofit of City Hall, which ensures the safety of both staff and the public during earthquakes.
Parks, recreation, and open space are vital for creating healthy, sustainable, and vibrant communities. Last November, the Reno City Council adopted the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan. The plan identifies top priorities and an implementation strategy to improve existing parks, trails, and recreational facilities, identifying and acquiring land for new parks and recreational spaces, activating the Truckee River Corridor and downtown spaces, and expanding recreational programming.
But the crowning achievement this year for the Parks Team is the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. Opening in August, this 52,000-square-foot facility will include a 50-meter indoor competition pool, multi-use indoor recreation pool, an outdoor soaking pool, 5,000-square-foot fitness facility, and more. This project represents a vital investment in the health and well-being of our community for generations to come.
As we approach the completion of two major projects in our community, the Public Safety Center and the Moana Springs Aquatic Center, it's important to highlight the clean energy components of both projects. At Moana Springs, the city received a community project funding award to install solar and was selected by NV Energy to be a community-based solar resource host site at the same location. The Moana Springs parking lot features solar-covered parking to support this project, and the Public Safety Center will include rooftop solar as well as battery storage to provide energy savings. By investing in clean energy, we are moving towards a cleaner, more resilient, and equitable energy future for our community.
Reno is one of the best places to live, work, and play, so we know that growth in our community is inevitable. At the city, we are focused on responsible growth to achieve balanced and long-term development that benefits all residents. Last year, the City of Reno completed the ward redistricting process that transitioned our community from five to six wards. Redistricting ensures that each elected official represents approximately the same number of residents. Final maps for the new wards were voted on by the Reno City Council following a community engagement process that spanned across four months and included 17 opportunities for residents to participate. The new ward maps will go into effect following the 2024 election cycle. We encourage you to visit our online mapping tool to learn more about the new wards.
Responsible growth means long-term planning. In January of 2021, the city adopted a new zoning code, and in June of 2022, the city initiated an amendment to address outstanding cleanup items. This includes everything from grammatical errors to accounting for updates in state law. Development Services has spent the past year working through these changes and seeking public input. Final adoption of an updated zoning code is anticipated early next year.
The City of Reno is working with our regional partners to manage water resources sustainably for future generations through the One Water Nevada Initiative. This program is working to ensure there is enough water available to meet the needs of all users while protecting and even improving the region's water quality and environmental integrity. A key element of this project is the Advanced Purified Water Facility at American Flats. With construction expected to begin in the near future, this facility will apply state-of-the-art water purification processes and provide the region with the potential for over 2 million gallons of high-quality drinking water daily.
At the City of Reno, we are focused on ensuring that everyone has access to safe and affordable housing.
The City of Reno helps to improve housing stability by providing rental and deposit assistance for all residents, including seniors and veterans. In the past six months, the team has assisted 584 households with rent, supported 175 cost-burdened seniors, and dispersed $1.5 million in rental assistance.
The City of Reno is a leader on the affordable housing front. Back in 2019, the state law changed, and since then, the city has been allowed to enact an ordinance that has given us the right to waive or reduce fees for sewer connection fees and building permit fees as long as the project is associated with an affordable housing development. And to date, Reno has approved reductions and waivers totaling almost $8 million. This has contributed to 1,800 new affordable housing units that are moving forward. City Council has also added conditional requirements for certain development projects, and those are to help pay for affordable housing. This has been triggered on five development projects. This is estimated to generate over $4 million in funds which will support affordable housing.
Last year, the City of Reno supported the development of 492 affordable units through funding programs and city incentives, including federal home funds, volume cap allocation, and sewer fee reductions. Developments that were supported include the Marva Way Apartments, Copper Mesa Apartments, Orovata Street Senior Apartments, and the Ridge at Sun Valley.
And while increasing the number of affordable housing units is a priority, the team is also working to invest in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. In the past year, the city funded $1 million in park and pedestrian safety renovations and supported key projects, including park improvements at Robin Hood, Dick Taylor, Paradise, and Mayor's Parks.
Downtown Reno is evolving as our community transitions from a region focused on tourism to a more economically diverse city that supports urban living, transportation, social gathering, and small businesses.
Many consider Virginia Street to be the heart of our downtown, and the Virginia Street Placemaking Study reinforced that. Heald Design Firm, over three phases of community engagement, developed a strategy and a long-term plan of what our Virginia Street in our downtown could look like. City Council approved the placemaking study last fall and identified $2.5 million in state and local fiscal recovery funds to implement Phase 1 of the study. This year, state and local fiscal recovery funds were also utilized to create the Restore Reno Facade and Tenant Improvement Program. The program provided matching funds to property owners and tenants for facade improvements and interior upgrades. 39 businesses were awarded matching grants, with the total economic improvement value of the combined projects being $5.7 million.
At the same time, the team partnered with the Regional Transportation Commission to develop the Downtown Micro Mobility Plan, enhancing downtown roadway networks to improve safety for all users and create a more welcoming environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other micro modes of transportation. Design is currently underway for this project, and construction is anticipated in 2026. And no discussion of the downtown area is complete without addressing the Truckee River Corridor. This year, City Council approved the use of state and local fiscal recovery funds to make improvements along the Truckee River path, including activation efforts, enhanced safety with better lighting, paint refresh, path improvements, and more.
Reno is committed to building a community where all residents feel welcome, safe, and able to fully participate in their government.
Providing access to city programs and services is critical to building a strong community. From improving ramp access to City Hall, to the addition of Ubi Duo 3 and Listen Everywhere devices, we are working to make government more accessible for everyone. Throughout the year, our team works with community partners to host celebrations that embrace, honor, and recognize the diverse cultures represented in the biggest little city. This includes the Black History Month Celebration in City Plaza and the Asian-American, Native-Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration at Wingfield Park. Building a welcoming community requires intentional efforts to embrace diversity, inclusivity, and create opportunities for all residents to thrive.
The safety, health, and well-being of all residents is our number-one priority as we work to build a community we are proud to call home.
The Reno Fire Department provides all risk service to citizens and visitors of the biggest little city. Last year, the team ran almost 50,000 calls, a record high for the department. This includes everything from emergency medical response and water rescue missions to all types of fires, including structure, brush, and vehicle, to name a few. including structure, brush, and vehicle, to name a few. The team continues to meet the needs of our growing community by increasing staffing and resources for the department, maintaining the strongest training program in the region, upgrading equipment through the Fire Apparatus Replacement Program, and investing in proactive fire prevention measures. We are excited to announce that plans are already underway for construction of a new central fire station that will be located in the heart of downtown. The 70,000-square-foot facility will house administrative and fire personnel with the ability to respond with up to five separate crews to serve the busiest part of our city. We look forward to its completion in 2027.
The Reno Police Department boasts 354 sworn staff members. To meet the growing needs of our community, we added 43 new and dedicated officers to the ranks, along with the hiring of seven lateral officers from other departments throughout the country. Last year, our patrol teams responded to over 72,000 calls for service. The traffic team responded to 2,971 accidents. Victim services served over 2,300 victims, and the investigation section was assigned 3,762 cases. These cases covered offenses from property crimes to crimes against persons. In September, the department launched a new data-driven initiative to improve crime and blight in downtown. The Directed Engagement Enforcement and Deployment Strategy, affectionately known as DEEDs, has been in operation for just over six months. In that time, we have seen a 12% decrease in the citizen-initiated calls for service, a 55% decrease in vehicle versus pedestrian crashes, and a 29% decrease in commercial burglaries. We are excited to announce in August of this year we will celebrate the opening of our new Public Safety Center in downtown Reno.
The Public Safety Center will serve as the headquarters for the Reno Police Department. Located in the former Reno Gazette Journal building, this facility will be able to provide a swift emergency response to our community. This state-of-the-art facility is double the size of the existing station and provides exciting new features such as expanded public parking, private interview areas, community engagement meeting space, and improved safety and security features to ensure the building will stand the test of time.
A fast emergency response would be impossible without the crucial work of our Reno dispatchers. Last year, our dispatch team answered over 500,000 calls, serving as the vital link between individuals in need of assistance and emergency service providers. And this last year, the cities of Reno and Sparks, along with Washoe County and REMZA, came together to identify a unified computer-aided dispatch program that will deploy the nearest and most appropriate resources to an emergency. The technology will be launched in 2025, improving emergency response for the entire region.
Our staff is made up of talented and dedicated people who are passionate about the biggest little city. We've built a workplace filled with integrity, positivity, collaboration, and diversity. An organization that has been nominated as one of the best places to work in northern Nevada for three years running and was the first organization in northern Nevada to be recognized as one of the best places for working parents. Our employees have endless opportunities to make a positive impact in our community. The people and stories behind our programs are why we take pride in our jobs and why we love this city. When we proudly look at the community we've built, we know we are just getting started.
We've had a lot of great accomplishments this last year, but the work isn't done. As we begin the next fiscal year, be on the lookout for some major projects.
Soon, we'll be opening the new Public Safety Center and the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. These landmark projects will serve generations of Renoites for years to come. We hope you'll join us for both celebrations.
And keep an eye on downtown as we continue to focus on revitalization using the input and feedback we receive from our community. You'll see improvements to the Riverwalk, activation of Virginia Street, and improvements for pedestrians and micro mobility users alike.
To keep up to date on everything that's happening at the city, check out our website at reno.gov and follow us on X, Facebook, or Instagram at City of Reno.
You know how, uh, speeders got categories?
Categories?
Different types, different cars. Want-to-be race car drivers with zero talent and all the insurance claims.
Go on.
Yeah, so you got the "I didn't realize I was going 95" type. Like, the car magically went 45 over just on its own.
Ah, officer, I thought I was going 45. No, buddy, you thought about going 45.
Well, then you got the "I'm late for work," guys. Like, going 25 over is gonna make up for the 30 minutes they spent laying in bed watching TikToks.
Ain't nothing like risking a reckless driving charge to get to a job that you already hate.
We can't forget the "I was just keeping up with traffic," folks.
Oh, the "if everybody jumped off the bridge" defense.
Just because everybody else is breaking the law doesn't mean that you get a free pass.
Nah, but it does mean we all get to sit on the side of the road together while we trade live stories and I write this ticket at lightning speed.
There's one.
Yeah, we got a black Volkswagen headed your way, guys.
Got him.
In all seriousness, Reno, we need to slow down when driving on our roads.
Speed and impairment are the two biggest factors in fatality crashes.
That is why the Reno Police Department will be conducting proactive speeding enforcement on McCarran and around the city.
Slow down, Reno. The... I'm not from Nevada, and pretty sure the speed limit signs all look the same everywhere.
Do you want to make a difference in your neighborhood? The City of Reno's six Neighborhood Advisory Boards are your chance to shape the future of your community. From parks and public safety to development projects, your voice matters. Joining a NAB is easy, and it's a great way to connect with neighbors and city leaders while making Reno an even better place to live. Applications are open now. Visit reno.gov/nab to learn more and apply. Get involved and help make Reno not just livable, but lovable.
I'm Cory. I'm a housing manager with the City of Reno, and we are here at our second Love Your Block project, pop-up nursery for Yori Avenue residents. We had residents of this neighborhood apply, and we've got about 75 plants and trees here to give out to the neighbors to beautify the neighborhood, get a little more green here. One day of planting and a lifetime of shade and beautiful greenery in the neighborhood.
The Yori Pop-Up Nursery is a project that my neighbor and I kind of came up with. People get to beautify their yards. Sometimes landscaping is intimidating due to the cost. This initiative, this project, helps kind of eliminate that obstacle for a lot of people. And so, it'll be nice to see more plants in more people's yards and just make more of a beautiful neighborhood. Secondarily, I'm a huge fan of pollinators and native plants, and so getting more of those in the ground is just gonna help the environment overall.
It's super exciting. I love this project. I started the Be Friendly campaign, which was created to help people talk to their neighbors. So a lot of times when you start a pollinator garden in your front yard, it doesn't look like a traditional yard. So I created these signs to kind of help with communication. It's a great neighborhood gathering, and I'm super proud to be a part of it.
We're just so excited to be here in partnership with Reno Food Systems, Be Friendly Nevada, and the Nevada Division of Forestry alongside all these neighbors to get in the neighborhood and get planting.
My name is Maria Hernandez Ponse. I am a graduate from the Community Court, and I'm here to share my success story.
About five months ago, you and I sat down for the first time and had a discussion. What do you need? What do you want? And I look at you. Tell me, I got bits and pieces along the way, but share what that was like. What was it like right before I met you, and what is it like now?
Well, before you met me, I was going through a very hard time. I ended up, you know, having to give guardianship of my son to my brother. I was trying to recover from drugs, and here you came, you know, the Community Court and yourself. And I mentioned that to you, and you told me about all these nice programs and resources that are available to me. And thinking five months back, like, I would have never thought that I'd be here right now, that's for sure.
Yeah. What connection did you make in Community Court that helped you achieve that?
Well, taking accountability for my actions, you know, realizing that I had a problem. Step one, you know, admitting that you're powerless and your life has become unmanageable. That's definitely very important. And then reaching out for help would be the second most important, I would say.
That's so cool. You are the image of what I want everybody that I meet at Community Court to accomplish. It's you. Every box I intend to check and rarely do, you do, and you check all of them.
I originally met Maria on our first day of work. We both had the first same start date, so we got to meet each other there, and we immediately bonded. I immediately saw huge potential in Maria. She is really great. She's a people person, and she just strives for the stars.
If it wasn't for Community Court, I wouldn't be where I am today. They pushed me to get the help that I needed with my recovery. You know, they helped me get my job. They've helped me through every step of the way.
Community Court is an alternative to traditional court. And in essence, that's what is different about it, is it's the alternative approach. I think in traditional court, it's more cut and dry, black and white. You've committed this crime. This is the standard sentencing. Therefore, here you go. At Community Court, Judge Hazel Stevens, who I couldn't say enough good things about him in the way that he is driving this court. It started with Nevada Urban Indians. Her counselor, Troy, knocked it out of the park with the substance use counseling. Job Connect, Tim, is her contact there, and he did a great job of working with her. They did the application process right away. They met later that week. They completed all of the online applications, sent out all the information they needed to, who then linked her to the placement agency that got her in here. She also worked with Downtown Reno Partnership, who helped her get her IDs. She wouldn't have been able to get this job without those IDs. And so, it was several people working together as one to achieve what we consider the perfect success with Maria.
Hi, I'm Monica Kirch. I am the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development for the City of Reno. The Rapid Rehousing Pilot Program is a program that the City of Reno started in coordination with Volunteers of America and the Reno Housing Authority.
Programs like the Rapid Rehousing Pilot Program are important to Volunteers of America because it gives us an opportunity to catch individuals who are otherwise potentially falling between the cracks as far as services go.
The Reno Housing Authority assists nearly 15,000 Washoe County residents through its traditional housing programs, yet we know there are many more who need assistance. The Reno Housing Authority supports the Rapid Rehousing Pilot Program in two ways. The first way is through a financial contribution to support half the salary of the service coordinator who works directly with clients at Village on Sage. The second way that we support the program is by ensuring that clients are on one of RHA's waitlists prior to being housed at Village on Sage.
The program is new, and we just started housing people within about the last month. We have several folks now staying at the Village on Sage, working with the service coordinator.
Partnerships like this give RHA the opportunity to assist more families outside of our traditional programs. And it's these innovative partnerships that create a stepping stone from temporary housing into long-term permanent housing.
So specifically, this program works with individuals who are on a fixed or low income, who can't afford conventional rents, and they're eligible for a housing voucher, but they still have to take the time to wait for that voucher. So it allows us to support them in that intermediary timeframe so they can stay housed and have access to services. I know specifically with this program, a lot of our folks are coming directly from the street and haven't had a rental in a very long time. Specifically, Mikey hadn't paid rent in over a decade. And so, it was really exciting for him to come to the office with his money and just celebrate that new experience that he got to have.
Hi, I'm Mike, and welcome to Village on Sage. We're... Come on, let's go look around. This... Yeah, oh. Hello, welcome. And this is what we get. I got a brand-new television. It's an Element. This is one of the finer, finer televisions. You're welcome to bring your transportation inside with you. Nobody cares, as long as you keep it neat and tidy. What can I tell you? The door's open. The train's right there, you know? So if you like trains, excellent. And this is where all the magic happens. This is where the happiness, you know, where we come to ground out. This is just where, you know, we can be ourselves. I know it's a...
Hi, I'm Monica Kirch. I am the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Development for the City of Reno. The Rapid Rehousing Pilot Program is a program that the City of Reno started.
The community is really going to benefit from the new Public Safety Center in a lot of ways. It's a state-of-the-art, brand-new facility that's going to allow the public access to us in a way that they've never had before in this city.
It takes a lot of people, a lot of effort, and a lot of time.
It takes every individual, all of us, on a daily basis to make this project work every single day.
I grew up in the area.
Wanting to make this city great and keep this city safe was a big part of it. It's a great testament to the City of Reno, too, just that they would have the leadership and the guts to go forward with a project like this that's so important to the community.
We needed something that was large enough for the expanding police department. The current site that the police department are on would need to be demolished because the building has some real structural problems, along with some hazardous materials that need to be abatement.
The hazardous conditions that you can find in buildings such as this are things like asbestos, things that were commonplace in buildings at the time when this was built. You have old pipes in here, you have old ventilation, you have dust.
They're working in jail cells. The water quality is not good over at the other station. It's important for us in our community to realize that, you know, they're doing a great service for us, they're all protecting us, and we need to protect them as well.
I have employees that work out of old jail cells on the second floor, which is, you know, pretty much an abomination that you spent your life doing a service to our community in a jail cell. It's got bars on the walls. But we're not able to provide the space that these employees need and treat them with the respect and dignity that they deserve. When you work in a building that has issues, that doesn't show the benefits that you are bringing to the community.
We looked at the fact that we could reuse an existing facility. You know, there's a lot of character in the City of Reno, and we do look at keeping some of that character. This building being the Reno Gazette Journal had a lot of history. And I tell you, when I first walked into this building, I felt, I felt the buzz of all of the media. It was just, it was really energizing. Justin came over and we took a look at it. We knew that it would be a big effort, but to reuse the same building, we thought that it would, it made a good fit.
There's a lot of, a lot of challenges, a lot of work between our architect and our police department on figuring out how to fit in a police department in this building.
Police departments generally don't visit people on the best days of their lives. They're usually when they're having something going on that's creating some sort of trauma or some sort of experience that usually isn't positive. And then to come into a place that's not welcoming and inviting and comfortable, and a place where we don't even have private rooms to talk to people currently, is going to change that dynamic completely when they walk into the new Public Safety Center.
First step is, is you've got to have an architect. We probably sat down for at least nine months, going back and forth, is this space the right size? Does this space have enough windows? How do we get access for video and surveillance and that sort of thing? They did an absolutely fabulous job putting together a set of plans for us.
When I looked at the designs initially, I was so proud that they were already in that space where they needed to be. There were very few modifications that I even had to suggest.
We looked at, it's called a design bid build, because we already had the design. So we put it out to bid to the public. Plenty of builders, they were our selected bidder.
Part of it is that we knew that the city needed this project. We knew this was a, was a community need, and we knew it was a challenge. And so we sort of look at ourselves as someone or a company that is willing to step up and take on a tough challenge.
One of the things that we also looked at in that time period is funding. As you all know, everything doubled in price practically after COVID, and that was a shock to us.
The pandemic affected construction in so many different ways. All those things sort of, you know, conspired to go against the cost of the project. So that was a challenge. But, you know, I think we did a great job of bidding out the project, getting the right subcontractors on board, vetting the pricing, making sure that it was fair and reasonable based on the current economics.
We sat in a room and we were like, okay, what can we do here? How can we provide the community with the facility that this community really needs? Our project manager, Justin George, he actually came over here and moved his office here, and it worked out really well because he had 115,000 square foot to himself.
One of the major challenges early in the project is upgrading the structure of the building. So this building had to be upgraded from a Level 2, which is what it was required for when RDJ occupied it, to be a Level 4 risk category building. The upgrades that we did to the structure and foundation make this building able to withstand a larger disaster and remain operational to be able to provide service to the community during a major event like an earthquake. Some of the elements involved with that upgrade include upgrading the foundation, increasing the seismic capacity. So we had to add larger footings, larger foundations under the columns. We had to add some seismic braces to the building. We reused as much of the building as we can. We salvaged a bunch of steel, a bunch of concrete, and a bunch of materials from being demolished and tossed into the landfill. We worked with a carpeting manufacturer to remove all of the carpet in the building and send that off to be recycled, rather than, you know, 100,000 square feet of carpet being removed and dumped in the landfill. Replaced a lot of the old inefficient 40-year-old HVAC systems with up-to-date, efficient mechanical systems. Not only does it have a backup generator, but it's also going to have solar and a battery system to provide resiliency in this building to be sustainable and better serve the police department and community. So sustainability is something we're thinking about from the beginning, from design, through to the end in construction.
We're able to expand our women's locker room areas and allow for that growth that we're hoping to see in our organization as we diversify and move forward. There's going to be space inside that facility that will allow us to conduct in-house training. We are going to have a much better access to things like a real-time crime center, where we can actually see what's happening in day-to-day, providing that privacy, that space, bringing people in, and then growing our department in a manner that makes sense. Moving into that new building and having all that equipment and that ability to do it is going to be very important to help those goals happen.
I believe that we, through our partnership that we have with the contractor, the architect, and my team, Justin and his team, they work together so well that we are going to deliver an excellent facility for this community. It's going to be a generational project. It is a generational project. And I think that our police, men and women, deserve better than what they have now.
I was very impressed with the team that was on the building team, the design team, our liaison that's working with the police department. Everybody really had a good working knowledge of what we needed to put into a police department to make it modern, but not trendy or flashy, something that is going to withstand the test of time. I can't say enough about the hard work and dedication that all of the team has put forward. And I'm just really excited to see how all their work is going to pay off.
It feels great to drive by and be able to point at something like this and say, you know, we were a part of that. We contributed. We helped get that over the goal line.
It gives me goosebumps. It really does.
Being a part of a legacy project like building a police department, it makes me proud of the work that I do, and it makes me proud at the end of the day when I can go home and tell my family about the things we're doing here.
I want to provide the city and this community what it deserves for the police officers to come to this project, come to this site, be able to grow with this site. And a police officer deserves the best of the best, and that's what this building brings to them, the best of the best.
I think about the people, really, more than anything. I mean, sure, I'm an engineer and that's what I do, but I think about the people and the people that are involved, and that's what gets me right here, because I think that there's so much heart in this community. I'm a public servant, and I'm going to do my best, and my team, they're going to do their best for the public.
One of the reasons why I joined RCI was just out of curiosity to know more about what the City of Reno does for everyone who lives here. It was a very genuine interaction with all of the people that we were able to meet throughout this process. That experience was incredible.
I'm a small business owner, and so I definitely felt disconnected, not in a bad way, but in the way where I'm like, oh, if I have an issue, who do I call? This seemed like a great opportunity to get a lot of information in relatively short time.
You might touch the street department, or you might touch the police department, the fire department, for whatever reason, just being a regular citizen. But you wouldn't learn about almost all aspects of city government and how it operates.
I have never seen a city that has been so people-oriented. I mean, it really seems like they care, and I love that about Reno. I love it.
This is definitely eye-opening, informative. It's a way to just learn how the city runs and to meet incredible people.
Street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood, getting people connected, and, you know, running them through some kind of education and connection, I think, is incredibly valuable.
You'll have an incredible time. You won't regret it.
It's a benefit all the way around, I think.
Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here this week with Reno Public Safety Dispatch to discuss calling 911. Aaron, what tips do you have for the community?
Well, definitely it's a lifesaving, life-threatening emergency. You need to call 911. Things for immediate police, fire, medical response. Make sure you know your location to give the call taker, and only use text to 911 if you can't make a voice call.
This is good information to know. And what should the residents also know about dispatch?
We do have a non-emergency number for all the rest of the calls that aren't emergencies, 334 COPS. Those are things for like parking problems or graffiti. It's also important to know that our call takers take over a half a million calls a year, so we get pretty busy, but we're always looking for more dispatchers. If you're interested, go to reno.gov/d dispatch for a job description.
Outstanding information. Thank you, Aaron. And don't forget to follow the City of Reno on all of your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with Reno. I'm Chris Payne for the Reno Minute. Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here today to discuss Community Court. Judge Hazel Stevens, what exactly can you tell us about Community Court?
Thanks, Chris. We hold Community Court each Wednesday here at the Downtown Reno Library. It is an innovative approach to the justice system that offers services rather than jail time for our participants, many of whom are homeless. Services needed include those for substance use disorders, mental illness, chronic homelessness, and chronic unemployment.
This is all good to know, but how does this differ from traditional incarceration?
Community Courts reduce crime, increase services to victims, reduce unnecessary use of jail, and save money by collaborating with service providers using a problem-solving approach instead of jail. We also recently implemented a treatment readiness program onsite.
This is all great to know. Thank you so much, Judge. And don't forget to follow the City of Reno on all of your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with Reno. I'm Chris Payne for the Reno Minute. Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here this week with the Reno Police Department to discuss the dangers of distracted driving. Officer Ressa, what advice do you have on this topic?
Thanks, Chris. Distracted driving claimed over 3,000 lives in 2020. Here locally at the Reno Police Department, we would like to remind everybody that it is illegal to use any electronic handheld device while driving. Texting has become increasingly dangerous.
Outstanding. And what other tips do you have for the community?
If you do need to make a text or make a phone call, simply pull over on the side of the road where it's safe to do so. Once you've pulled over, it is now safe to make that text message or make that phone call. You can even put your cell phone in the backseat and the trunk, or even in the glove box until you've reached your final destination.
Thank you, Officer Ressa. And dig this. For more information, go to renopd.com. Also, don't forget to follow the City of Reno and RPD on your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with Reno. I'm Chris Payne for the Reno Minute. Hello, I'm Chris Payne, and it's time for the Reno Minute. Today, we're going to discuss making a fire escape plan. Joining us is Chief Mandel from Reno Fire Department.
Thanks, Chris. A fire escape plan is essential because it lets everyone in your household know exactly what to do in case of a fire. Seconds matter in the event of a fire, and an escape plan can make a world of difference. Start by drawing a floor plan of your home and marking all possible exits from each room. Then designate a meeting point outside a safe distance from the home. Practice your escape plan regularly with everyone in your household, especially children. It's important to make sure that everybody knows how to operate windows and doors. It's also important to teach household members to stay low to the ground in smoke and to fuel doors for heat before opening them.
Thank you, Chief Mandel. To create your own fire escape plan, scan the QR code on the screen or visit reno.gov/fire. So now you know with Reno. Thank you for watching the Reno Minute. Hello, I'm Chris Payne, and it's time for the Reno Minute. From lap swimming and drop-in sports to fitness equipment, the City of Reno offers many opportunities to get many opportunities to get active and have fun. You may even be able to access these offerings at no cost. Kayla, what should residents know about insurance reimbursement?
Thanks, Chris. Our Parks and Recreation Department recently expanded their offerings with insurance companies, offering memberships to them at no cost.
Well, this is exciting. How does it work and who qualifies?
Yeah, the program offers memberships through their individual insurance company. The insurance company then reimburses the city of Reno for each visit that they come to use our facilities. The expansion of this program is especially beneficial to our seniors. However, it qualifies anyone 18 or older. You just need to contact your insurance company.
Thank you, Kayla. And don't forget to contact your insurance company to learn more. Visit reno.gov/parksandrec for more information. So now you know with Reno. I'm Chris Payne for the Reno Minute. Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here this week with Maintenance and Operations to discuss leaves. Tim, with fall being here, what advice do you have about leaf removal?
Thanks, Chris. This is typically the time of year we start to see the leaves drop. And it's pretty simple. Property owners are responsible for the removal of leaves on their property. And we ask them to do this in a timely manner to help from flooding or clogging drains during a rainstorm.
This is good to know. What other advice do you have for the viewers?
So it is unlawful for homeowners or property owners to rake or blow leaves out into the street. So we ask them to please place them in their garbage cans or in a bag with the excess waste sticker for garbage pickup on their days. And if they could help out, our street sweepers by trimming their trees and removing parked cars and garbage cans would be very helpful.
Outstanding information. Thank you, Tim. And don't forget to follow the city of Reno on all of your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with the Reno Minute. Hello, I'm Chris Payne and it's time for the Reno Minute. Today, we're excited to spotlight the city's new Rolling Recreation Center, a mobile recreation center designed to bring fun and activities to communities across the city. Here's Kayla Snow to tell us more.
Thanks, Chris. Our Rolling Recreation Center is all about making accessible recreation for everyone in our community. Our mobile recreation center travels to various parks following the schedule of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada Kids Cafe Summer Meals Program. This means that not only do kids get free recreational activities, but also a free meal. Our program offers a wide range of activities for people of all ages, including sports, games, arts and crafts, and so much more. The Rolling Recreation Center is free and open to the public. We welcome everyone of all ages to come out, have fun, and enjoy our city parks.
Thank you, Kayla. Visit reno.gov/parksandrec to find out when the Rolling Recreation Trailer rolls through a park near you. So now you know with Reno. Thank you for watching the Reno Minute. Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here this week with the Reno Police Department to discuss the SAVE volunteer program. Evan, what is SAVE?
Thanks, Chris. SAVE is an acronym that stands for Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort. It's a wonderful organization that comprises of seniors and they help the police department with additional resources. And through their patrols, they help with crime prevention and observations.
Outstanding. Also, if someone wants to volunteer, how do they get involved?
Basically, anyone in SAVE is 50 years of age or older. We ask that they volunteer 16 hours a month and they can, if you're interested, either call, email, or visit the website for Reno PD.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Evan. And don't forget to follow RPD and the city of Reno on all of your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. Hello and welcome to the Reno Minute. I'm Chris Payne. We're here this week with Public Works to discuss street rehabilitation and maintenance. Jonathan, what can you tell us about this program?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Our Public Works Department is working really hard to improve our neighborhood streets in our community. For instance, we're just finishing up a rehab project in Midtown where we included the replacement of our roadways, streets, sewer, and even had alleyway improvements.
Well, this is good to know, but how are these neighborhoods chosen?
Sure, Chris. Good question. The city inspects all our local roadways and calculates a pavement condition index or a PCI score. The streets with the lowest PCI scores are grouped and ranked based on factors such as utility placement or proximity to essential services. If you'd like more information, please visit our website at reno.gov/capitalprojects.
Thanks so much, Jonathan. And don't forget to follow the city of Reno on all of your favorite social media platforms. So now you know with Reno. I'm Chris Payne for the Reno Minute.
It's very hard living at the shelter. It's kind of survive if you can until you can get out. And the thing about...
Which item are you here for?
My situation was...
D1, 2, or 3?
Was a conduit for me to thrive. Once I got out of there, as you can see, I'm doing pretty well.
Reno Works is a joint partnership with Volunteers of America and the city of Reno, and he was one of the...
All right, Vice Mayor Taylor, if you'd like to reconvene the meeting, it's 2:01. And at this time, Councilmember Ebert, Councilmember Doer, and Mayor Shevior are absent.
Great. Madam Clerk, we're going to go out of order because we have the presenter for item D2 here. Let the record reflect that council is opening the public hearing for item D2. Was proper notice given and correspondence received?
Vice Mayor Taylor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received. Additionally, we do not have any public commenters on this item.
Okay. City Attorney, would you like to read the ordinance?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7322, case number LDC 26-00013. Luella Garvey House Historic Resource Designation. Ordinance to man title 18, chapter 1802 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a plus or minus 0.36 acre site from professional office to professional office with the historic landmark overlay zoning district. The subject property is located at 589 and 599 California Avenue and has a master plan land use designation of suburban mixed use. Ward one.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, do we have any disclosures? Okay, go ahead.
I'm moved to refer for a second reading.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item D1. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, we're opening the public hearing on this item. Was proper notice given and any correspondence received?
Madam Vice Mayor, proper notice was given, no correspondence received, and we do not have any public comment registered.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7321, case number LDC 26-00011. South Valley's Park Zoning Map Amendment. A request was made for a zoning map amendment for mixed-use suburban zoning district to the parks, greenways, and open space zoning district. The plus or minus 69.2 acre site is located on the west side of Wedge Parkway, plus or minus 800 feet south of Arrow Creek Parkway, and is bound by White's Creek Lane and Interstate 580 on the south and South Virginia Street on the east, South Valley's Regional Park. The subject site has a master plan land use designation of parks, greenways, and open space, ward six.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any disclosures?
No.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion? Or do you want a presentation?
No, I make a motion to refer.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Those sheets are really working, Jackie.
All right, do we have any here for item D3? Jeff Foster, welcome.
Okay, let the record reflect that council is opening the public hearing on item D3. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? And do we have any correspondence?
Madam Vice Mayor, proper notice was given. We did receive three letters of correspondence in opposition of this item. We do not have any public commenters registered.
Okay, councilmembers, any disclosures?
No.
Fantastic. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I... Madam Vice Mayor, my only worry is that the ward member is not here. Do we want to see if she's going to make her...
Jennifer, would you mind seeing if she's interested?
I would just hate for us to get out over skis and have it be recalled.
Totally understand. Good call.
I see that it is a 700 planning commissioner recommendation, so I feel like it will be not difficult, but I just wouldn't want to overstep.
Is there any interest in moving to item G4, which is the youth city council appointments?
Yes, we can do that.
Prepare to make a recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Martinez.
Awesome. For the youth city council, I'd like to thank Karina for coordinating the interviews and getting that together. I'd like to recommend Daisy Miller, Tristan Martinez Voucher, Lily Bridges, and Gio Kim to be appointed to the youth city council.
Second enthusiastically.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. G2, Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, in the same vein, I want to thank Megan Burner and her work with the Chair of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. I know that she did interviews and we had a robust discussion at the meeting about these applicants. And the board voted for the educator will be Megan Bavaro, Stephanie Maza, Melissa Olson, Megan O'Reilly, and Lane Snyder.
Second.
Motion a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
G3, Madam Vice Mayor.
G3, Councilwoman Doer?
Yeah. All right, can we come back? I just want to make sure I have the right names.
Okay. I think we're still waiting for our Councilmember Ebert.
Madam Mayor, would you like to handle item G1? We've just, we've moved kind of rapidly through. We are if nothing but efficient.
Hold on a second. Okay. G1. Yes, hold on, hold on. Okay, so G1. And any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment registered.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to appoint Councilman Reese.
Madam Mayor, that's very kind, but I'm going to decline in part because I have a lot going on, but also because I've had it twice. And so I thank you for the opportunity to serve again and certainly am grateful for it. I'd like to nominate Councilmember Martinez.
And I have a motion. Well, I think you better ask him first.
I suppose that's true. Since she didn't ask me, I'm going to ask you. Councilmember Martinez.
Miguel, and I would love to have you. You are a joy to work with and you're kind and you're thoughtful. And, but I think we should ask you first.
Yes, I would be honored to serve in this role and I appreciate the support from Councilmember Reese in appointing me in this position and you as well, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. Hope to make you all proud.
And I think that's a wonderful choice. Good job. Councilwoman, did you want to say anything? No? Everyone's got their lights on? No? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I like that because Councilwoman Doer, you've had it a couple times. Councilwoman Taylor's had it. Yeah. Councilwoman Taylor and now Councilman Martinez.
Love it.
We'll go that way. You next? Okay. I think we should go back to G3. Okay. I would like to nominate Susan Kaiser, William Reich, and Joseph Tuval to the Urban Forestry Commission.
Second.
Okay, perfect. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Well, let me understand. Look at who's there. Well, one sec.
I know, Boston.
One second. It says two here, but when I last looked at the list, it said we had three openings. So that's why I'm a little confused. So I don't know if there's anyone who can confirm that or if we have any... I don't know if Tyler's here. Tyler's on his way.
Yes, Boston.
Tyler Shaw, gender manager for the record. There are only two vacancies currently.
Are there?
Yes, there's only two. So we can appoint two today and then bring back a future appointment if indeed there are more than two.
Okay. For some reason, I had read some other materials that seemed to say there were three. Okay, I think it was on the last agenda, it said there were three. And that's where I got confused.
I'll look into that.
All right, well, if there's only three, I think I'm going to go with William Reich and Joseph Tuval. Right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are... D3. We are back at D3.
Madam Mayor, this had already sort of begun. Jeff was in front of us, but I wanted to make sure the ward four member was here in case there were issues. I noticed that it was a 700 approval by planning, so I didn't know if anyone needed... I do not require for me a staff presentation, but I'll turn that to Ms. Ebert and Ward Four.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, I'd like a presentation. I'm familiar with the area. There was a presentation at my nab, but I always like to, you know, have this available on YouTube in case I get questions from ward members that aren't able to come to meetings in person. It's great to be able to send them the YouTube video and a timestamp to watch it. So I know where the area is. It's not too far from my kid's school. I've taken a kind of an unofficial tour of the site, but if you could just kind of go over the map and talk about what it is, that'd be great. Thanks.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jeff Foster bringing you High Sierra Gas, LDC 26-8. The project site is about 66.8 acres in size on the northwest corner of Lear Boulevard and Sted Boulevard. It is developed with a large industrial building that was built in 1987. The parcel is surrounded on three sides by industrial uses and undeveloped parcels that are zoned industrial and neighborhood commercial. There are residential uses adjacent to the parcel on the east side that are across two roads. The request before you is a conditional use permit to allow a propane storage facility exceeding the 10,000 pound threshold for propane per NRS. So as we zoom in, I just wanted to point out that the applicant leased a 14,000 square foot area in the north central portion of the site, and that's in the area under the blue star there. But they did not obtain the CUP prior to establishing operations. The requirement for the CUP was identified during business license review. The key issues that staff analyzed are compatibility with surrounding uses, site operations, and agency coordination. The master plan is industrial and the corresponding zoning is also industrial. So as far as background, the 30,000 gallon storage tank holds approximately 24,000 gallons of liquid propane, which is about 100,000 pounds of propane when full at 80%. The site previously contained three 30,000 gallon tanks in the area you can see on the screen there that the prior owner used for backup power for a paper manufacturing facility. These tanks were removed sometime between 2019 and 2021. The applicant subsequently purchased the tanks and reinstalled one of them. And then they also acquired an existing propane distribution company and they've been using the site for storage and propane delivery since October of 2021. Turning to compatibility with surrounding uses, as previously noted, the general development pattern in the area is industrial with residential to the east. The three 30,000 gallon propane storage tanks were located in the exact same spot on the site for multiple decades. The tank is approximately 350 feet from the closest industrial buildings to the north and the south, as you can see on the screen. The tank is about 840 feet from the closest residential property line, as you can also see on the screen. And a portion of the eastern perimeter has a large berm such that the tank is not visible from the residential area. And based on all of those things, staff has determined that the use is generally compatible with the surrounding land uses. So in terms of some site operations, and this is where we get into some of the nitty gritty, the site is not customer facing. It has no propane bottle filling. The thirty thousand gallon storage tank is filled with a large transport propane carrier, and then the applicant loads the propane onto their own trucks and delivers it to their customers. The site has twenty-four seven security with three locked gates needed to access the facility. Condition number five requires that the gate at the facility remain locked when personnel are not on-site. The other two gates are locked after normal business hours, and the main gate off Lear Boulevard is under supervision. And the location follows all NFPA fifty-eight code requirements, and staff included that as condition number six. The last thing, and this is one of the interesting things about hazardous materials, is it requires agency coordination. RMC requires agency coordination with a number of agencies, including the administrator of the Division of Environmental Protection, of the State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the state fire marshal, and the administrator of the Division of Industrial Relations of the Department of Business and Industry. There are some others that we are supposed to look at as well, but they were not applicable in this case. So regarding the first one, DCNR, they indicated to me that propane has a unique exemption from CAP under applicability rules. Basically, if the facility is a retail facility, it's exempt from their standards for the CAP program. And because the applicant does provide one hundred percent of their propane directly to end users, they are considered a retail facility and are therefore exempt. And we received confirmation that DCNR had no further comments. The next one is the state fire marshal. They basically want to check that the propane tank has a hazardous materials permit. They confirmed that it does have a hazardous materials permit, so again, no further comment. And then last but not least, the state of Nevada Department of Business and Industry does not regulate liquidified propane storage tanks. So here are the recommended findings for a conditional use permit. Staff can make all recommended findings, as did the planning commission. Because it involves hazardous materials, the planning commission has two additional findings that they need to make. Again, they could make both of these findings. And here's the recommended motion. As Councilmember Reese pointed out, the planning commission did vote seven to zero on October fifteenth to bring this forward to the council, subject to all proposed conditions. That's it for my presentation, and the applicant, Carl Wimbigler, is here. Should you have any questions for him?
Okay, thank you. I want to hand it back to you, Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, if the applicant can come forward, please. So can you just kind of explain what the difference will be once this is approved, or if it gets approved?
Nothing changes.
Okay. So I just want that to be on the record. This site is being used for this. It's not a place where people come and fill up like small tanks for their barbecue or anything like that. This is more for like industrial, commercial use, correct?
That's a hundred percent correct, yeah. It's not a part of our business model. It wouldn't, you know, we deliver to end users only.
Yeah.
And, you know, like a four gallon delivery into a grill bottle just wouldn't meet our business model.
Yeah.
So we do have other locations in California where we have dispenser tanks.
Yeah.
And they're set up for that. So it's a totally different system. In California, we have two thirties in Beckworth, and we do the same kind of operation. And then at our office in Portola, California, we have a dispenser. It's similar to our dispenser that we have off Lemon Drive at Ranchers Feed. And Bob over there fills bottles for customers.
So do you take, take this in trucks and deliver it to homes in the area as well?
Yeah, in showing commercial accounts. Yeah, in the area.
Okay.
And so the ten thousand pound to me is, it's interesting because our trucks have more than that onboard. So it's, we wouldn't be able to operate effectively and with our margins and things if we could only have that little bit of storage, so.
How often are you refilling those? Like, what's the turnover at this location?
We usually get one to two transports a week, depending on the size. So there's two transports that we get either between a nine and ten thousand pound trailer or up to a fourteen thousand pound trailer. So it's big loads that we get. And so the ten thousand pound will be about a thirty percent load, and that's about three truckloads off of our equipment.
Okay.
So it's about three truckloads. So in the winter, when it's cold, that's when our business is, where we do the most business. And there are days where our drivers will deliver five thousand gallons a day.
Yeah. Yeah, I have family further out in the lemon valley that use propane to keep their homes warm in the winter. So is it your company doing the distribution as well, or are there like contractors that come in and take the propane and deliver it?
Oh, no, it's just us.
It's just you?
Yeah.
Okay. So you don't have people coming in that aren't properly trained and know how to handle everything? It's not, you know?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that this isn't someplace where people can just come in and act irresponsibly and potentially cause a fire or anything like that. This is, this is used by the community quite a bit, especially in the wintertime. It's a community resource, and it's not something that the public has access to. And also, if you look at the map, I don't know if we can go back to that aerial view, it's got a little bit of shrubs around it, but it doesn't really have much to catch on fire, God forbid something happens. And I know at the NAB, you had mentioned that it just kind of is like evaporates.
It vaporizes.
Vaporizes, yeah.
Yeah, so any time, so it's interesting, liquid propane's not flammable.
Uh huh.
But the vapor is.
Yeah.
So there's an eighty-twenty rule with all propane tanks. So we fill it to eighty percent, twenty percent of it's vapor. But over negative forty-four degrees, the propane will vaporize or boil off. So if I had a gallon of liquid propane and I was outside and I poured it out, it would just vaporize.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It's lighter than water and heavier than air, so it'll actually settle to a low point.
Yeah.
But it will just go away.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm not crazy that there are homes so close, but you have a pretty big buffer around, and it's already there, and it is something that's used by the community. I just wanted to kind of talk about this on the record, that people, you know, understand what's going on there. So thanks for coming up and answering my questions. I don't know if you have anything else?
Yeah, Councilmember Ebert, I just wanted to also point out that Fire Marshal Beck did look at this as well and spoke with Carl, the applicant. Captain O'Brien is here as well. He can address those issues because Fire Marshal Beck was not able to attend today. But they did look at the safety of the site in terms of access to the site, the distance between the uses, and just ultimately determined that it was not a hazard as far as fire concerns.
So the vapor, you know, if all the fuel vaporized, would it be a risk to the homes that far away? No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to support or to uphold the decision of the planning commission.
All right, thank you very much. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for sitting here all day. I apologize. Hopefully you learned something. Hopefully you walk away with.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been fun to be a part of the process and kind of see how things are going on.
Discouraging.
Yeah.
So thank you for sticking it out with us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, take care.
All right, you as well.
Good luck. Okay. Council? Comments? H one? Comments? H one. There was something in my brain, though, that I wanted to put on council comments. Now I can't remember. Shoot. Brandy knows what I mean. Okay, do you guys have anything? Go ahead, Councilwoman Martinez. Vice Mayor Martinez.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Martinez. So two Ms. Good, I like that.
There's some reiteration there. Just quickly, wanted to highlight that this Saturday at eleven AM, we're doing a ribbon cutting for the sports courts that were just upgraded at Miraloma Park. So if anybody would like to join us, we'll be there with some snacks for the family. It might be a cold day, so feel free to bundle up and maybe wet, so feel free to join us if you can this Saturday at eleven AM at the Miraloma Courts.
Well, that'd be great. Let's not get too far ahead of ourselves and predict weather. Let's, you know, it's Reno. It could be seventy-five and beautiful, right? Right? Let's keep the hope alive. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, when I earlier brought up about the midtown holiday parking, which is a cool concept.
Yeah, I love it.
I just wanted to do a shout out to a couple of the businesses that helped us. And one of those who doesn't get a lot of recognition is The Wild Orchid. They actually opened up their parking lot for that parking event, which went on for about six weeks.
That was nice.
And also, as I remember, Thai Chili was at the south. They were at the north end, and the south end was like Thai Chili, which is almost all the way at the south end. And then there were three businesses in between. So I just, there's a lot of opportunity there for both the businesses to get recognition and these parking lots to get used, which are often sitting vacant. So I just wanted to do that shout out. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Nothing?
Oh, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So I do have one of those coffee with the council members this weekend. I believe it is on, I don't know if it's Saturday or Sunday, but I believe it is. Anyway, what's different about it is that we're going to be at a completely different venue over at the California, the villages on California, right near where Keystone and California meet. So that's the House of Bread. Some of you may know it. I've been at other events there, and they're just really cool people, super nice. And, you know, I wanted to spread the love around, especially now.
Is that the original owners?
As to my knowledge.
Yeah, they're nice people.
I've been there for like tennis awards ceremonies for our youth and other things. A House of Bread.
Oh, I'm familiar.
Yeah, really neat. And it's a, it's an awesome, I picked it before Swill Coffee and Wine went out of business. And I just did want to do a shout out to Swill. They found themselves in the crosshairs of a new landlord buying a business and raising rates and them not being able to meet those rates. And then they decided, well, maybe it's time for us to close up doors, given everything. So I did offer, the mayor did offer to help them renegotiate. That should be said. I never put that out on Facebook or anything, but they decided, you know, this is probably a sign. So they decided to close up shop. But I will tell you that the outpouring from the community, I mean, it's been in the newspaper, it's been in alternate newspapers. I don't know, and I am struggling, because I did probably eighty percent of my meetings there that were out of this building. I am struggling because I have been visiting every coffee shop, like three miles north and three miles south, looking for that, both the ambiance, but also the seating. And I'm struggling, so.
Comic and coffee.
I write across, I've had many meetings at comics and coffee, coffee and comics, actually. And I'm just sharing, though, that one of the unique things they did, and this is really a challenge out there, is they supported virtually every nonprofit. If someone asked, could we use your space and room for an event? They said yes. And this is pretty much unprecedented. I mean, it was over and over, not to mention the knitting clubs, the card clubs, the games, you know, just the seniors hanging out there. Many groups that wanted meetings, they held them. So that as a resource is pretty hard to replace besides the delicious, you know, offerings. Even from other really great coffee shops just don't have that kind of room. But anyway, that's it, just a note of sorrow. They will be missed.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to say happy overall that we have, you know, continue to have an agreement with the US Bowling, what is it, Commission? Is that what you, Congress?
Yes.
Yeah. But just looking forward to maybe having more engagement with RSCVA in the future. I know we've talked about it a few times, and I know Mike has come in to a meeting recently, but just hoping to have more collaboration. And I know Mayor Sheevy, you represent us, and you're doing a great job over there. But I just want to continue to work with all of our different boards and commissions, but especially RSCVA, to see, you know, what other ways we can activate, just, you know.
I think you bring up a good point. And the reason is, I'm not going to be there, and I would think that you guys want to start paying attention to, you know, because it's been many, many initiatives.
Yeah.
That have actually saved the city millions of dollars, and I've had to go over there and fight and be very unpopular. Brandy, you love tourism, and so, you know, I just want you guys to think about that. So I think you bring up a good point, that we need to figure out the best way for you guys to get the information, to know what's going on all the time. You can always reach out to Mike, always, always. And if you need anything, you know, I'm happy to help, but I would like, we do have, Jackie, we have presentations from them.
Yeah, because I hear, I've heard from a couple of people, there's going to be a neon sign museum on the first floor, which is great. It's going to be opening up. I feel like the council should, you know, have some kind of presentation about that. You know, there's other areas of the stadium that could be activated. I know there's a bar upstairs. Maybe that could be like a cool kind of speakeasy thing or something.
Yeah.
I just wish that we could have just a little more engagement and input as a body with that group.
Yeah.
And not so much as like getting informed maybe after, but like be a part of that process together.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the council liaison be the, you know, the voice for us, but just so that we can help guide that a little bit more.
Any ideas you guys have, just you got to do it, because, or bring them, because they're not, they're not bad ideas at all in any way. Matter of fact, we could have, I don't know if you guys, I don't remember if you were here, Megan, but we had a haunted house in there. So any ideas you guys have, I think it's a great idea to have the conversation.
Yeah.
Mike should come and present.
We just didn't have that opportunity.
Hey, if you guys have ideas, I think it would be great for him to hear those, because that probably never would have happened without the council being supportive and those. And I think to your point with Will coming in there is actually really, really cool. It's going to be a good partnership, so. But we should know about it, because I think we can elaborate on things we can do.
And also, like, I don't know if we have an idea, is that something that I should ask the city manager? Hey, can you agendaize RSCVA? Or should we just have periodic like workshops with them and talk about different ideas that we have? That's a piece, so I'm not sure of, like, how do we engage more with them? But anyways.
I like it. I think it's totally worthwhile and a good idea. I don't know, let me, let me ask Jackie what's the best way, because maybe we should actually have sort of more of a retreat with them in some way.
I'm down for whatever, yeah.
Because it would be fun. Because you guys should see a lot of the tourism numbers, you'll love those. Brandy already kind of is, knows all of that stuff, but some of them are impressive. And they do a lot of cool things over there that we really don't know about, that we're doing outside the market. But it's cool.
It would be helpful for the body to get a viewpoint of where we were twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
What we were scrapping by with twenty-nine dollar room rates and having no airlines that wanted to do business here, and being able to see the progress and the arc over time would be really, really helpful, because it establishes those benchmarks for us to be thinking about how we can help support them and fight for the business. Because that's what it is. We have to earn business. We need to steal business from other markets by being better than them. And we can only be better than them if we're all engaged in that. So I think a retreat is an interesting concept.
And just for, on a similar line, but not about the bowling, is I did take advantage when Mike was here last time. He said, come to me with your ideas. So I did meet with him briefly about the curling, International Curling Association coming and setting up. This is a proposal I brought to the previous RSCVA director, who dismissed it pretty much out of hand. I had a whole meeting with him and his staff. So we're doing round again.[1643.83]